Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's reconvened budget meetings, budget hearings. We're joined today by Mayor Paduto and his team. He'll introduce them shortly. We'll begin with our Budget Director for City Council, Bill Urbannick, and thank you for all the work that you and Mike have been doing. We'll begin with you to give a brief intro into the mayor's budget.
Sure. Thank you, Councilwoman or President Smith. The mission of the Office of the Mayor is to provide leadership, strategic direction, and administrative oversight to all aspects of city government operations, and to develop and implement policy reflective of the goals and priorities of the citywide community. The Office of the Mayor assesses emerging trends and issues, identifies strategies to respond to these challenges, one of which this year was and takes a lead role in coordinating resources to respond to citywide initiatives. It acts as the official liaison with City Council, Allegheny County, Pittsburgh School District, state and federal agencies, and all other government agencies. The Office of the Mayor also manages the relationship between the operating divisions of city government and other levels. The Office develops and leads a customer-friendly and efficient workforce and is responsive to the diverse needs of the community. Mayor's Office also provides leadership on economic development policy and job creation. It advocates for economic development by ensuring that government programs, policies, and activities are appropriately synchronized to provide a climate favorable to business, job creation, and homeownership. The Office of the Mayor provides direction and encouragement for a culture of continuous improvement in the services and processes of government. To that end, there is specific attention to cost containment and an open, accessible, and transparent government. We have this year some numbers that we've sent out to everyone, and this is specific just to the Mayor's Office's budget, not citywide. The total budget for the Mayor's Office this year in the 2021 proposal is $1,148,000. That's a decrease of what was anticipated in last year's five-year plan. That decrease is $317,000. Total full-time positions, 13, that's a reduction of one. And as you know, we have, as we've been speaking, we're speaking specifically about reductions in this budget. Reductions in the first six months of the year. One of two Assistant Chiefs of Staff have been eliminated. Office of Manager, upper office manager swapped for local and community relations coordinator. That's the same pay grade. Non-salary expenditures reduced by $22,000, that's 31.4%, including employee travel, administrative fees, catering, and cleaning that have been eliminated. Anticipated workforce reductions as of July 1st, if we don't get any additional funding in, that workforce reduction is $190,884, based on the average salaries and benefits of current employees. That equals the elimination of four employees within Mayor's Office. Anticipated workforce reductions in the Mayor's Office and Office of Equity are 40% higher than they are in other bureaus and departments. The Mayor's Public Service Grants for UBGULO is $100,000. That's a decrease of $75,000 from 2020, and a total of $400,000 from that 2016 capital budget. The Mayor and Mayor's Office oversees 98% of the operating budget, the entirety of the capital budget, and 95% of the trust funds. And those are the numbers that I have for you. With that, if I could hand it back to you, President Smith?
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation, and I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Paduto after I make sure that I acknowledge we're joined by Councilwoman Lavelle, who's the Chair of Finance and Law, Councilwoman Strasburger, Councilwoman Kraus, and Councilwoman Gross. And if, as other members join, we'll make sure we announce them. Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning, Council President. Well, thanks for having us. I just want to start off by talking about this year. I mean, it's been an historic year, obviously, with a number of issues that have come up. We have struggled with a global pandemic that now has left us with almost 200 public safety employees quarantined or actually testing positive for COVID. The number of public works employees is now in the dozens, and we realize that we are not at the worst point yet. Meaning, as we prepare for a snowstorm that is arriving in the next 24 hours, we have had to shift over our drivers who would be driving snowplows to pick up garbage in order just to be able to keep mandatory staffing levels present. And as we go into these next few months, this situation is not only going to become common, but it's going to become acutely worse as we lose more and more city personnel to COVID. Now, that is compounded by the fact of 2020 being a year of great recognition of racial injustice and dealing with over 100 protests throughout this year within the city of Pittsburgh, but also dealing with the realities of what is needed in order to create a city government that is cognizant of it and is being aggressive in the proactive ways that we can do more to be able to limit the amount of disparity. As you know, our report last year was the benchmark report to be able to show where disparity exists in the city of Pittsburgh. We ripped the Band-Aid off and we said, "There is a problem," and this is how it is identified. Over the course of the past year, I'm proud to say we've been able to work with the Gender Equity Commission in order to be able to follow their recommendations, in order to be able to lessen that. It will be a constant battle. It will be one that will be fought throughout a lifetime, not one that will be fought throughout a year. But at that same time, we have made great strides, and we can put our administration up against any in this country about the amount of progressive programs and the amount of resources being utilized in order to address it. Finally, we face an economic crisis, three crises simultaneously that we have to address. Unlike Washington or Harrisburg, we don't get to kick the can down the road or to apply it to somebody else. Our deficit financially is significant, and it's not because of mismanagement of any of our finances. It is due to a lack of revenue because we have not built a resilient revenue stream for local government in the state of Pennsylvania. We must re-identify how we pay our bills and to be able, in that process, to do it fairly. But even more importantly, we have to do it in a way that builds partnerships and does not burn bridges in order to be able to get the type of support that is needed. We have this opportunity with this financial crisis in order to be able to do just that. But again, it takes building partnerships in order to be able to make that happen. Now, let me just briefly state, within our own budget, I have given my office the orders to lead by example, to present cuts to our office that are more significant than to the other offices throughout city government, and to be able to present a balanced budget plan that realizes that there is a new administration in Washington. And I can assuredly talk about that, that the conversations I have had with the President-elect's administration, and that hopefully, we will see this type of a partnership in Washington amount to a fiscal recovery plan for cities throughout the United States that are states that are feeling the same crisis that we are feeling economically. Lastly, we are also facing an economic crisis within certain industries within our city. And these industries are run by the people we call our neighbors. We recognize that what they are going through, through this crisis, can only be rectified through direct assistance in helping to bridge the opportunities over these next two years, both what they have lost this year and what they will lose next year, and working with the state and working with the federal government to be able to create programs that cross municipal boundaries and recognize that the problem is much larger than any one local government. Going back to the office budget and the specific changes, I've asked my staff to be able to present the minutia of the budget itself, and then to present after they have been able to talk about the personnel and the other costs to funding a mayor's office, a greater vision, and then taking your questions as well. So, Council President, I would like to now turn it over to my Chief of Staff, Dan Gilman.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam President and esteemed council members. It's always a pleasure to quote-unquote "be with you," whatever this is, from my dining room to yours. I want to talk about the Office of the Mayor. I will leave the Office of Equity, which we'll do as a separate conversation, though we obviously work as sister organizations, working closely together, and we do have Deputy Chief of Staff Majestic Lane and Assistant Chief of Staff Lindsey Powell on as well. As the Mayor said, and Director Urbannick outlined, since we were before you a year ago, Gloria Faruzan, our Office Manager, retired, and Grant Gitlin, who was an Assistant Chief of Staff, took a position outside of the city. And with that, we hired Hersh Merenstein as our local government and community affairs coordinator. His salary is equal to what Gloria's was, so the city sees the savings of the elimination of the Assistant Chief of Staff position held by Grant Gitlin in a one-person reduction. I also think it's important to point out that during the COVID economic crisis, the Mayor has been very clear as a directive to all of us that we follow, you know, the North Star of people's safe, health, and safety first, and protecting people. That's obviously been seen through the outstanding work by Public Safety Director Hisrick, Chief Romano, Chief Pinchok, and others in COVID preparedness and response, as well as the great work by departments across the city and all especially recognized parks and recreation, who, you know, have fed over a quarter of a million meals to needing seniors and children in something that's not their function or their usual job, but responding to the moment in need and doing it. Incredible work by Laura Jagowski, who was in the Mayor's Office of Equity and will now run OCHS in response to the needs of homelessness and housing insecure populations during COVID. And overall, a city, and you know, I think this gets overlooked sometimes, as all of you well know, city government doesn't, and government isn't always the most nimble of organizations, but we very quickly, everybody, took an entire city government and put it online. And a huge amount of credit to IMP, to city planning, PLI, and departments who allow development to continue and building permits to continue despite no in-person, to HR, which did everything from hiring and testing to payroll services without being in the office and going online. It's really been a tremendous accomplishment and amazing what our 3,500-ish city employees have been able to do, and of course, those who are still on the front lines daily. While I, you know, stay inside, we know we have employees across departments who are out in the streets keeping us safe and healthy, but also in the building, doing essential services to make sure checks get deposited and checks get written, and certainly in great coordination with Controller Lamb in his office to make sure that the government keeps working. With that, we ordered every single department, including the Mayor's Office, to cut non-personnel costs by 10% during the year to help start cutting back. We also did a, what I call a semi-hiring freeze at the time. We froze about 80 positions in the budget, things we deemed that could wait. We did not do an entire hiring freeze, as there was a need to proceed with certain hirings, like a partial fire class, some paramedic positions, some labors, and a couple other critical roles. Going forward, it has been the Mayor's Directive that we do everything possible to not furlough or lay off workers. City workers are our families. We are in this together, and these are employees who are dedicating themselves to public service at a time of great need, and we've done everything possible, and we are one of few, if not only, cities in the entire United States who can stand up and say that we have kept every city worker on and every city worker insured with health insurance through this difficult time, and that continues to remain our focus. To do that, what we did in the budget is we eliminated the vast majority of vacant positions. We, of course, have to take the vacant positions out, not just have the hiring freeze, because we must present to you a balanced budget. And one thing we will not do is provide you a budget with fake pretend revenues, as was done in the past, and drove the city to Act 47 in the late 90s and early 2000s. So, we will provide you a true and honest balanced budget, which means our expenditures must match our revenues. So, we start with what our revenue projections are, that I believe have been certified by the Controller, and we go from there to get our expenditures down, and to do that, you've got to take positions off the books. So, we eliminated vacant positions because as difficult and as critical as many of those positions are, key roles as building inspectors, critical roles in DOMI, we're working on safety and infrastructure, critical roles within the Mayor's Office, or EORC, or I know City Council as well, who has participated, very critical roles. But the bottom line is they're vacant, and the Mayor, it's been very clear, he does not want to call a city employee in to let them know that they're being laid off at the moment, and they are losing their health insurance, and they are losing the funds that are paying for their house or putting food on the table. And so, we would rather eliminate those very difficult positions and hold out till July 1st on any cuts. As the Mayor noted, we are in daily communication with Washington, whether it be through our lobbyist, Terry Huber, who does amazing work on the ground for us every day, working the halls in Congress, or the Mayor's direct communication with the Biden transition team, or our work with the US Conference of Mayors and National League of Cities and other organizations to not only push for funding for local, city, and state government, but also funding for our needed businesses, our restaurants, our music venues, our small business owners, and having a meaningful Heroes Act passed that takes care of all Americans with unemployment and direct support. We also have been lobbying with the understanding of a new administration coming in and looking at a potential infrastructure bill or stimulus package to make sure that the city's needs are at the top of the list, and that we have shovel-ready projects to lobby for inclusion. At the same time, we are keeping our finger on the pulse of the likelihood of a Heroes Act or amended Heroes Act being passed. President-elect Biden has been very clear, not only with mayors and cities, but on national television, that his top priority coming in is getting this passed, and we feel as confident as one can when talking about Washington, that the President and the Democratic Congress are pushing to have it done. Of course, we have a Republican Senate who has expressed reservations about these bills and the size of them. But I feel optimistic that by July 1st, something will happen, and we'll be able to avoid the very concerning layoff furloughs that would have to occur in the city of Pittsburgh if we get there. If we do hit that point, as I think you know from your other budget hearings, that equates to roughly 10 and 1/2% of personnel costs. To be clear, the budget is on the personnel side, and it's 10 and 1/2% in every department, and the Mayor has said that we'll cut the Mayor's Office by 15%. So, we'll lead with deeper cuts percentage-wise from our budget than we ask any other department to do. At the same time, the Mayor noted our work in Harrisburg. Again, thanks to our great lobbyists in Harrisburg, PJ Lavelle and John Mulady, and really leadership from, you know, our entire delegation, but working very closely with Jay Kost, our Senate Minority Leader, working on a number of different initiatives. We successfully, and appreciate council support, were able to get some laws changed that protected us financially on PWSA and allowed the co-op that City Council passed to be codified into law, which saves the city $10 to $20 million in the upcoming year, and that was great work by the team I talked about in Harrisburg. And we're also working to start to look at new revenue. What is a revenue model in a post-COVID world for cities, whether it just be Pittsburgh or be cities across Pennsylvania? What should a tax structure look like that shows greater resilience than what we've seen in the past? And we continue to have that conversation. Of course, we will not see those new revenues for a 2021 budget, but we are optimistic we'll have some new options for 2022 and preparing the city better for the future, which is something we've been focused on, coming out of Act 47 and working with City Council to be financially responsible and build up 100-plus million-dollar surplus that allowed us to get to this point. Imagine where we would be as a city if council and mayoral leadership hadn't been in control. I want to make sure Controller Lamb has been a great champion with us on these efforts to be a financially responsible government, be properly investing in our pension, but also properly investing in our rainy day fund. And it's pouring, so I'm glad we have our rainy day fund. It's been a very important piece. But we also have been setting up the city for the future in terms of investment in areas that you can see, feel, and touch, and those that you can't. Heavy investment, thanks to council support in last year's budget, in the innovation and performance to start fixing our network, rewiring our buildings, getting the station alerting for our fire and EMS head buildings with diesel exhaust systems, trying to redo our rec centers for our Rec2Tech program. These aren't always things the public sees. They can be very expensive. They take a very high level of expertise, but no city in the 21st century can operate without this core technology infrastructure behind it. We also have been investing in the infrastructure you see, and I know many of you in your districts have seen the work, whether it's our parks and ballfields, it's our Vision Zero by investing in traffic signal improvements, bike infrastructure, critical sidewalk apps in our low-to-moderating income communities, record investment in landslides across the city, step and wall repair. We're rebuilding Pittsburgh quite literally from decades of lack of investment and climate change. And then lastly, I'll say with climate change, it's investing in the future there with the adoption of our UN SDGs and our 2030 goals. It's planning a resilient city for the future that can address these concerns economically and from a climate perspective to make sure Pittsburgh is doing its part globally to set up a progressive, resilient future for the city and for the residents. With that, I will stop and turn it over to Majestic Lane and Lindsey Powell to see if they have anything to add up specific to the Mayor's Office, not the Office of Equity, and look forward to the conversation with all members. Thank you.
Nothing relevant to the Office of the Mayor, other than to say, Chief, that I think, you know, the leadership of the Mayor and the leadership of the decisions we've made dealing with the confluence of these crises have been something that we've had to really adjust and be nimble and adapt. And I think to echo your statements, just thank you to council and all the different counselors who have been supportive of our ability to adapt to, you know, new realities and still be able to provide the services and engage communities in a way that we have.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
No.
Do you want to at least introduce who you have with you to the public, so they know who they are?
Absolutely. Lindsey, do you want to introduce?
Absolutely. Lindsey Powell, Assistant Chief of Staff. Largely, I work on legislation and policy, running that team that works closely with the Office of Equity. So, good to see everyone.
Anyone else?
You taking questions from members now?
Yeah, we're going to take, well, we're going to take questions from members, but I also want to make sure that people know that we will do the Office of Equity and the Controller following these questions for the Mayor's Office directly. And so, with that said, I would also want to add that we're joined by Councilwoman Calkhill and Councilwoman Wilson, along with Gross, Kraus, and Lavelle, and we'll start with Councilwoman Lavelle, since she chairs the committee. Councilwoman Lavelle, do you have any questions?
I'm passed at the moment.
Okay, anyone else, any other members?
I will. Yeah, please. Yeah. Good morning, everybody. Welcome. It's been a challenging year, to say the very least, and my question is, it's ongoing, but no less important. Mayor, are you still with us? I don't have all my, there you are. Hi. Good morning. How are you? So, you brought up about revenues and consistency in revenues and sustainability in revenues, and I know you've had some conversations with the incoming administration, which is wonderful news, and I'm extremely encouraged that there will, God willing, come a time that there will be packages, financial packages for cities like Pittsburgh to keep us from having to lay off any city employees, and that's greatly encouraging. But once again, that's a revenue source that's not sustainable long-term. And so, I want to talk a little bit about sustainability and creating revenue, which is a topic you broached, which I really like. Do we have options, or can you think of options or suggest options for continuing or sustainable revenue that does not necessarily include this partnership between the city of Pittsburgh and nonprofit? We have, you, well, you've been here for a very long time as well. I've been here 13 years. We have struggled to create that ongoing partnership with nonprofits. So, I don't know that I necessarily want to go there, but beyond that, can you suggest ways that we collectively, as elected leaders, can seek out, encourage, and secure additional sources of sustainable revenues?
Yeah, and I think it's going to be absolutely necessary as we look to building future city of Pittsburgh. Our revenue structure does not represent the Pittsburgh of today. It is more a snapshot of Pittsburgh in 1950. And what we did during Act 47 was the beginning of a process that I believe needs to be completed. The conversations, and I'll ask Dan to talk more directly with the big four, with the UPMC, Allegheny Health Network, Highmark, Carnegie Mellon, and Pitt. That represents around 80% of all of the nonprofit, either property or wages, within the city of Pittsburgh. And they should be addressed independently of the other nonprofits within the city. Looking toward them to be able to provide a relief valve, basically, to what our present tax structure is not only fair, it is also contingent upon the city being able to pay its bills in the future without driving the people who live here out. And our conversations over the past several years have been able to identify 47 different areas where we could work together in creating a more robust city that recognizes where disparity exists under a plan that's been dubbed One PGH. But as of yet, the financing of that has not come through. So, now it becomes relevant that we look towards Harrisburg in working with Harrisburg to provide us the tools in order to be able to secure revenue from our nonprofit large institutions. To be able to do this, we've incorporated and hired a firm out of Philadelphia that has been creating a simulator so that the public will be given a tool to be able to look at all the options that are presently available through state law. And it's important for anybody who's watching, who is part of the public, the city doesn't have the authority to create its own taxes. That can only be done through the state. So, when people just say, "Just tax UPMC," we can't do that. It has to be state-approved in order to be able, for us to be able to do it. It has to be state approved in order to be able, for us to be able to do it, which is why building these partnerships in Harrisburg is so critical. Now, the simulator itself will also look at scenarios for other taxes that we could lobby Harrisburg for. And it would allow people to go into a situation where, let's say we want to change our wage tax to an income tax. In other words, not just tax people on their paycheck, but if you're making money through the market, which is taken off, in which why the state is not facing the same problems we're facing because they're able to tax that income as well. Can we then lower our wage tax in the city or our income tax in the city? And then what would that number look like? If we were to raise property tax by a half a mil, but then increase the homestead exemption? What if we were able to create a wage tax that had an exemption for the first twelve thousand dollars you paid? So people who make twelve thousand are left paying nothing in the City of Pittsburgh and create a very progressive system? What would that bottom line look like? And then being able to look at all of the different options, including the nonprofits, what would the entire situation look like? Our goal is to have that simulator presented to city council with a full post agenda before the end of this year and be able to allow you then to start the process and to take it to the community and to see what type of tax structure the people in the City of Pittsburgh would like to see. Imagine if you could do that with the federal taxes that we pay or the state taxes. Why shouldn't Pittsburgh be the leader in creating a system like that for local taxes? So we are in the last part of the analysis of the simulation to be able to present to you. We will ask them to be able to have a full presentation during your budget hearings, not after. And we will ask them to be able then to get your input into maybe different changes that you think we should be looking for as we then go to Harrisburg to lobby for those changes. There's no doubt whatsoever that the COVID crisis has proven that our revenue structure is not resilient, that it cannot survive a crisis like this. And if we simply allow it to continue without at least putting on the fight in Harrisburg, then the next generation that faces a crisis like this may be the one that has Pittsburgh facing bankruptcy.
God forbid. Quick follow up question, Mr. Mayor. Do you have a sense that there's an appetite in Harrisburg among legislators for reform or even the beginnings of a discussion of reform?
I do.
Oh, that's great.
I think with not only what has happened with the pandemic, but what has happened with the discussion of race and equity.
Equity.
That there are also opportunities to look at Act forty seven for the first time since it was enacted in 1968.
Second question.
With elected state representatives on both issues.
So second and last question, because I know members will have a lot to offer. A topic that has been very near and dear to my heart since coming into office, of course, has been the food and beverage industry and all of its complexities. And if there's anything that we have learned through the COVID crisis is the importance of the food and beverage industry to sustaining small business, to creating revenue for the city and probably beyond frontline workers. No one has taken a larger hit than food and beverage business. I lost you. Where'd he go? Did we lose the mayor?
No, no.
There you are.
I was just going to grab some notes sitting in my living room.
I like to pretend I'm actually looking at people when I'm on here. But the, yeah, so no industry has taken a bigger hit, nor have we learned more soundly the importance of food beverage business to the economy never, like never before. So thoughts, ideas, there's going to be a complete reinvention of this industry. And yes, complete. And it is such a golden opportunity for us to create this industry to be everything that we wish for it to be. And so just interested in your thoughts about food beverage, how it comes back, what it looks like, how we can help and how we can get in on the ground floor, if you will, and build a really strong foundation for the industry to truly be contributing in every way that it possibly can and has the right to be. So I'd be curious.
Yeah, it's going to be absolutely critical to the building back program for Pittsburgh. We have got to be able to have a vibrant city, not just economically, but with providing the opportunities for people who want to be able to live here. So there was a little sketch, you know, that I've started putting together and I started talking to staff to two weeks ago. When we talk about other economic industries, we talk about the need to access for capital. How can we be able to create an opportunity for investment in order to be able to sustain and build present businesses that are here? As we start to think about Pittsburgh, we should be thinking about what I'm calling Pitt Star. Pittsburgh Sounds Theater and Restaurants. The stages, the theater, the music and the restaurants have been a source of great pride in the city over the course of the past eight years. We have been able to build up a city that has been recognized as a foodie city, a city that has been able to see a sustained music industry building itself up, where before and decades earlier, people had to leave Pittsburgh in order to be able to sustain themselves as musicians. And our theaters and our arts, especially when it comes to the smaller theaters and the arts, have grown exponentially within the past five years. Now, we need to continue that growth and that's going to need investors. What Pitt Star is, is an idea of creating venture capital that invests in the venues and the organizations, coming not only from city government, but from the philanthropic community and namely the wealthy. People who have made a name in the industry, they call Pittsburgh home. And this is not charity. This is like somebody investing in a tech firm where they can see a return on their investment. So as I look at, you know, right now, the Bloomfield Bridge Tavern, Howlers, Highland Avenue in East Liberty that has the old V, the VA, which has three different stages, the Rex Theater, the Warner Theater downtown, the Park House on the north side, James Tavern, the Garden Theater, the New Granada Theater, Ham Bones. We need to be able to find the people who are going to be the next generation to take on these venues and to be able to basically bring back into the community live music, live theater and great food. And I tell the people in this industry and I hope they understand, we have not seen the darkest days yet with COVID. They're coming and they're going to probably put us back in a situation where we're going to have to shut down again. And being able to struggle and survive through that is contingent upon getting a Heroes Act passed out of Washington. We have a new administration coming in that understands that. But the help cannot happen by the City of Pittsburgh and Bethel Park and Baldwin and Mount Lebanon and Swissville. There are issues that need to be addressed at a federal level during a global pandemic in order to be able to keep our head above the water. But at that same time, local government can build the partnerships that are necessary in order to be able to make that investment happen once we get back. So I agree with you, Councilman, a hundred percent. We can build something back that is incredibly special. Club Cafe, all of these different places that have basically defined Pittsburgh need to be a part of our future. But it's not going to happen through a city government budget. It simply can't. It has to be the partnerships with individual investors who are willing to make a commitment to Pittsburgh's Sounds, Theaters and Restaurants, Pitt Star.
So honestly, the last thing, I promise, shame on me for not including theaters and event spaces that create and nurture socialization. It, beyond the elements for choosing to where we live, cities to where we are going to live. First, we're going to look, can I get a job there? Are the employment statistics good? Can I buy a house there? Is our real estate market strong? Can I educate my kids or further my education myself? But the fourth leg of the stool is what am I going to do if I'm not at work or not at school or not at home? It's, we want to, we're social beings. We want to be in places where we can share and create and socialize and interact with our fellow human beings. And so one very minor suggestion, as we do this reinvention, and I so very appreciate your ongoing commitment to the Office of Nighttime Economy. But perhaps we look at that more as the Office of the Sociable City and who and what we are, you know, in creating these sociable spaces and that we are committed beyond just one segment of that economy, but to the holistic and the broad approach of how important it is to be a sociable city and to provide for, God knows, human contact, which we are all at this point in time absolutely starved for, for having been isolated for so very long.
I agree. This concept really came about through a conversation I had with Jeff Wilkie from Amazon. Jeff, if you don't know, he was a 1985 graduate of Keystone Oaks. I was an eighty-three graduate of Sharters Valley. Jeff is the number two person at Amazon, right below Jeff Bezos. But he's retiring. And he's retiring because he believes that manufacturing in the United States is headed for a comeback. And what he's creating is a new company that will invest in manufacturing and sort of be the equity that small companies need, plus the technology in order to be able to have them expand. And under his model, it started to seem very similar to what could happen within Pittsburgh's ecosystem of music, theater and restaurants. But what we need are the Jeff Wilkies. We need to find the people who have a very strong love of Pittsburgh and are involved in the industry. The Jimmy Millers, who's an agent in Hollywood, whose brother Dennis Miller, they both went to Keystone Oaks as well. The Thomas Talls, the folks where the investment of private, private development with public participation in bringing that investment to it will help somebody like Liz Berlin keep Mr. Smalls open in Millville and be able to help them to expand upon it in a way where the Pittsburgh music scene can truly take off. Now, there's going to be those who say, we don't want any private involvement. We don't want any corporations. And to them, I would say, where do you think the capital will come from? Do we shut down our rec centers and our senior centers in order to give it to private companies? Where do we find those resources? And if we can find it through Pittsburghers who have pride in the city and are willing to invest back into the city in order to make it vibrant, then why shouldn't we try?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam President, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. And now we have Councilman Gross. Do you have questions?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Everybody here, thank you all for being here and giving us, I think, a much needed overall picture of the challenges that both the city residents and businesses face and our city government faces and government workers. And my sympathies and best wishes to all of the city employees who are either actively identified as, you know, having COVID or in quarantine. It's very stressful and I really appreciate all of their efforts to keep the city running. So many of us are fortunate to be able to work from home. And a lot of our workers, our frontline workers, our essential workers. And so I appreciate your efforts as well to keep them safe. I think it has revealed, however, that some of our department's staffing is just too thin. We are still understaffed from Act forty seven and having cut our staffing levels so severely while we were near bankruptcy. And I just want to make sure that we all emphasize that because there's a kind of just general American assumption that every bureaucracy is a bloated bureaucracy. And that is simply not true with a lot of our city departments. And they are just too close to the bone in terms of staffing levels. And so many of us have heard complaints, mostly sympathetic complaints from constituents, for example, who didn't get their recycling picked up or didn't get their garbage picked up. And when I'm able to explain to them, that's just because someone's out, either because they're a caregiver or they're in quarantine or they're actively a COVID case, a TPW, of course, they're sympathetic and understanding. But we're really can see which departments can't afford to lose even a single employee out, that there's a direct impact on services. And so I just want to give you an opportunity to explain why there are departments like PLI, which I argue has been, right? It's been flat, even though we have seen a fivefold increase in permitting in the last six or seven years and has lost staff positions on January first in your proposed budget, right? And where we've seen these open, you know, temporarily open positions, maybe somebody quit or moved out. And so for example, at PLI, we heard testimony in the budget hearing that there were, you know, there were some position that had a midfield from May, but it was frozen and then it was eliminated. And yet we have, in my estimation, right? Departments that have since Act forty seven not increased. And yet our police staffing has dramatically increased in large part because citizens and city council members demanded that we increase officers, right? I was there, I heard the, the, those calls for action and I voted on those budgets myself. I'll take ownership there. And yet we're not, there's not a single officer reduced in your proposed budget. So I just want to give you an opportunity to explain that.
Sure. First, I agree with you completely that, you know, we're not back to a fully staffed city government that the, the, what was it? Fourteen years of under Act forty seven? It was just cut, cut, cut. We cut all the way into the bone. And in many departments, we still are feeling that effect. What is really relevant right now is what that actually means. Last week, we had to transfer ten laborers from Public Works Department over to Environmental Services just to be able to have the minimal amount of people to be able to go out and pick up the garbage. And even with that, we didn't have enough crews to be able to adequately staff recycling. And that is a direct correlation between, you know, being able to have a government that is running and operating at its leanest that it can, but realizing that when something like a pandemic happens, we don't have a built in strategy in order to be able to rectify it. You know, I am so worried about what December and January are going to look like. And as this continues, you know, we are now at the process of having to look at independent contractors for snow removal. We would obviously have to be at a state of emergency in order to be able to do that per union contract. But we may not have enough drivers this winter. We're putting them into positions that they were not hired for. That they were not hired for. To be able to pick up the garbage. And. You know, last resort, if we are at that state of emergency, I've had our staff look at. Talking with the governor's office about. Hire having the. National Guard. Available as well if necessary to plow our streets. That's a situation that nobody wants to be under. That's a situation that you would hope that you would have enough of a adequate. Number of people to not be in, but it's the reality that we're facing with COVID right now. When it comes to policing. I have not had one. Neighborhood organization, not one. Neighborhood organization in the city. That has come out and said, we need less police in our neighborhood. I've heard a lot of activists. And I've heard a lot of people who believe in abolishing the police. And moving completely away from having police at all. But I've not heard from communities and I've heard from so many. That have said, don't you dare take the police we have out of our neighborhoods. And I think that the budget is reflective of the city. And that the budget and the city. Believe that we need to have an adequate number of police. In order to be able to respond to three one one calls. That when somebody calls for help. That there should be an officer that is able to get there to help them. Now, I am completely for reimagining our police department and I. I I fortunately have a lot of people within the command staff. That also recognize the importance of that. Do I have everyone? No. Do I need to have culture change? Yes. Will it require potentially new leadership? Yeah. And we're willing to do it, just like we did with. The change of command on our. Public events. But what I don't have is a community that is saying. We'll give up our police, you can have them in a different neighborhood. I've got people in areas that are asking for mini stations. East Liberty has been asking for that station to be returned since I joined city council in nineteen ninety five. It has been decades that we have promised them that that would come back. And the administrations since have never been able to deliver. Zone five public safety meetings have had it as its sole purpose of discussion for years. And yet a group of people who don't live in the neighborhood are demanding that the people of East Liberty don't deserve it. Zone five is the only police station that isn't in a neighborhood. In our entire city. It's along a highway. In a flood zone. That contributes to deadly flooding. We have created green infrastructure plans with the community and with environmental groups. In order to be able to turn that land into a way to be able to use green infrastructure. In order to lessen the amount of flooding in our city. We have worked directly with the community in order to bring back a station that would not only have the station. But a community meeting room that they requested so they could be a part of it. Zone five is the only police station you cannot get to by taking a bus. Every other police zone can. But people who don't have a car don't have an ability to be able to get to their police station. We would never ever design. A plan where zone five would be located where it is. In fact, we would call it segregated. And in fact, if we were to restore zone five instead of going back to its home in East Liberty. It would cost taxpayers more money. We would be funding the police.
If I may, I was hoping to focus on the operating budget, which is some five is. A separate topic that people have been of activated around certainly, which is the capital project. But mainly and but the 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 operating budget for the police has really. Just. Moved budget lines, right? Moved some sixty five. Crossing guards out of. Police Bureau and into police administration. So there was actually no real substance, there was no cut to the the police bureau budget. But there was an elimination of thirty five, I think. Crossing guard positions again, which I just. I I really struggle to understand because those that really are critical. We we also have heard calls for increased crossing guard coverage at so many intersections. And then when we look at again budgets for city departments that do protect people in a different way. They don't respond to nine one one calls, I think you're referring to nine one one calls earlier when you said three one one calls. The departments that do respond to three one one calls. Which are also about kind of rebuilding communities that kind of investing in communities that we can. Try to avoid crises in communities by investing in them, you need staff to do that. You actually need people to respond to those kind of calls as well, and I feel that we have actually. We're we're hearing calls for increased service around those departments. And yet we're cutting those, right? And I've shared elsewhere and it's in the police budget hearing where I I gave a lot of the information about. There are cities comparable to our size and crime rates, they're really not related to crime rates. How many officers, especially in terms of ratio to civilian personnel, police departments have. And our benchmark cities like Austin and Seattle have dramatically fewer officers per capita, per ten thousand people. I I'll send it to you personally, I cited a. Table from Governing Magazine, which is already twenty fifteen. We know that we've seen in the last six or seven years, some two hundred more officers. Added at least, I think when I asked at the police hearing. Directly to Chief Schubert, there were one thousand and four officers on payroll. That day like a week ago, that's high, it really is high compared to what we've seen in the last fifteen, twenty years. So if you could speak to that and then I'll I'll let it go because I don't want to take up everybody's time.
I understand, I'm gonna I'm gonna touch on what you're talking about specifically and you're you're right, I I didn't. I was addressing the capital budget, not the operating budget, then I'm going to just ask Dan. To get a little bit more specific about the crossing guards and. And the shifts that are happening within the police budget. When we came into office, we had approximately eight hundred and thirty police officers. And we do the the major complaint from neighborhoods back then was we didn't have enough police and they were right. For the number of calls that we have, which are somewhere over three hundred thousand. We basically had. A substandard number in order to be able to respond with a a an adequate time. We have increased that number by having recruit classes continuously since twenty fourteen. And as many as three a year. When in the past years during Act forty seven, we would have zero or one. That has allowed us to get up to a thousand officers. Which has allowed us to create new programs, it it allowed us to create a mini station at. Northview Heights, it has allowed us to promise to the communities of the south side and Homewood. And the Hill that mini stations will be coming there as well. These are requests being made by the people who live in those neighborhoods. They're not mandates that are being placed by us. They are personnel decisions. If we are now to cut. From the police, we cannot cut the responses to nine one one, what we'll end up cutting. Is our civilian affairs division. We'll end up cutting our community outreach programs. We'll end up cutting all of the different community oriented policing programs. That we have added into the police over the course of the past seven years. The the first in order of policing will still be to to respond to a nine one one call. And I understand that, you know, the the ideas are, how do you minimize the amount of nine one one calls? Can some of that work be done outside of somebody who wears a police uniform? And I believe that's correct, it can be and it should be. And the issues of homelessness and addiction. And issues that people are facing, mental health issues should be handled by social workers and not a part of the criminal justice system. But you still need to have an adequate number of police. Is it eight hundred and thirty? No. That we went through that. Every council member said when we are, we came in in twenty fourteen, we need more police in our areas. And we did that and we worked with city council in order to be able to do it. Now, is it a thousand? I'm not sure, but I'm willing to work with city council to find out if it can be less. And if it can be less in a way that allows. Different types of service to be replaced by it. But what I'm I didn't want to do in this budget. And what I don't want to do during my administration. Is laying off people, I went through that and it was horrible. If we have positions that are vacant right now. And during the time period between now and getting a federal package to help us. I I would rather have the people that have city jobs right now not have to worry. About this next month, whether or not they're still going to be working in January. And then work with council after the federal programs come. And I believe they will come to see where we do need more. Councilwoman, I agree with you, PLI needs more. They they have a lot more work to do. And even though technology has been adapted to be able to get their job to be more efficient. They're being asked to do way too much. And it slows development within the city.
And I'll just, I will leave you with that, but it doesn't just slow development, it hurts, I think, small businesses that we purport to support that really are the majority of places where our residents are employed. And where you we really create local wealth. So to be get the kind of handholding that they deserve. And I think they should rightfully have, they can't get it from reviewers who are overwhelmed. Right? And so we end up doing a lot of like a significant portion of my constituent load. Is holding people's hands through PLI and permitting zoning permitting as well, right? So city planning can't take any more cuts either. Or else that small business fails. Or or doesn't open. And I've had both things happen, so I would love to work more on that and I would vote for to shifting some of those funds away from place and to PLI.
Yep, I would also ask to just have that conversation with Marty Lamar. Part of his duty for economic development and the the main duty. Is being able to coordinate between PLI, planning, zoning. U R A in order to help small businesses. And having a a one person. Point person for city council through the Economic Development Chief. I think would be extremely helpful as well. His job is to make sure that when communication is not happening, that there's a person you can go to. At any time in order to be able to make sure that it does get done. Yeah, if if somebody's trying to start a small business, they're already. Behind the eight ball right now with COVID and everything else. And the last thing we want to be is an obstacle to make it even more difficult. Let me have Dan, though, jump in just to to talk a little bit more about the school crossing guards, the police budget. And the new operations that we're proposing in this budget.
Yeah, if if I can, Mayor, just on on the technical side in the weeds, first of all, Councilman, I don't think, you know, the mayor disagreed, I think most on this call would agree that the need for more in many places, including PLI. I would note that in twenty fifteen, there were seventy two employees in PLI and in twenty twenty, there were eighty nine. So this mayor has significantly invested in the same thing, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but can certainly get them for you. In city planning and IMP and in other. Departments to rebuild since the decimation from Act forty seven, but PLI has been one of the areas. And of course, with the creation of DOMI, that's almost, I think that's almost a hundred, I have to look it up, eighty nine, ninety, a hundred. New positions, some transferred from Public Works, but many. New positions. Facilities, building out Chris Hornstein's team. So there has been investment in a lot of those areas. In this budget, I I'd also note that there was elimination of vacant operating positions within police, civilian police. And there were no new police classes. So there isn't an expansion in the number of police, it is a reduction. As you'll have retirements or or transfers and there are no new academy classes that the mayor has put in the budget. So you will actually see presumably some reduction, I we don't know how many people retire, but it'd be. A miracle if the number is zero. So there would be actually some reduction in some or there would have been an increase. Because of course, the the reality is with not just with police, but but buyer EMS asked me, we have union contracts with guaranteed raises. Guaranteed increases in longevity. Uniform allowance, any number of of areas, so you naturally have to have an increase in in costs and personnel. So by not having a new academy class and by cutting the vacant civilian positions were able to offset what would be an even bigger increase. In many of these areas. And into the crossing guards of which, you know, I agree completely with you in theory. Those positions have been vacant for years, we get almost no applicants to become school crossing guards. So to keep positions in a budget that we know people aren't applying for because part time work. Is not attractive at this point. In the same way. And in return, actually laying someone off who has a family and kids and takes the the paycheck away isn't a decision we're willing to make. In in a perfect world, agree completely, but the reality is. Just like some of the positions that are vacant, they're limited in other places. They aren't attracting. The applicants, it it's true in environmental services in many cases as well. And the the obvious response to that is we'll make it a more attractive job that people want to apply for. Which is, you know, not wrong, e- except for, you know, look not, look at a budget. You know, and we struggle to get by each year because of tax revenue and some of the changes we or challenges we talked about.
I just have to jump in a little bit and say I would be happily to help disentangle what is the obstacle to getting people to apply for the crossing guard jobs and get those jobs because. I've had some of the talks with them and certainly those part time jobs are income that people need. Let's not say that they aren't. Right? And so I think there are some obstacles to the way that we do hiring and placing of crossing guards that have been the obstacle from what I've heard. People who would happily take those jobs but can't. Logistically do it if they're assigned across town from where they live. So I know that there's some complexity there that we could take offline and we'll happily try to have those conversations too.
Yeah, would certainly welcome some of that input, we we have not seen applications for crossing guards, we we are, we have reached a new. Union contract agreement with the crossing guards, which has some enhancements, not as many as we would have liked to see, not because of. A lack of agreement, but some challenges with state law. Which seems to be a common refrain in this conversation and many. Which challenges with state law and wanting to see the role of school crossing guards expanded. In a workforce development opportunity that actually can lead into to careers from it. It has historically been a a different position than what we we would like to envision. But ultimately, as painful as it is to eliminate those and we hope to put them back. It it made more sense to us and at the mayor's direction to eliminate vacant positions that people weren't applying for than to actually lay off. Off workers and and to be clear, if we cut the police budget further to reallocate resources, which is certainly. Council's prerogative and and you know, the role of any legislative body. It it means layoffs, it does not mean cutting vacant positions or non personnel costs, it means taking people who have jobs and a paycheck. And telling them that they don't now and and that was not something the mayor supported in this budget.
Madam President, I don't want to take all the time here in this discussion, so I will, I will stop there and I'm eager to hear other members' questions, thank you. Thank you.
The idea with the crossing guards is something we would be very interested to working with you on. What we were thinking when Dan talked about workforce development. Can we create a program that works with Pittsburgh Public Schools? Especially Westinghouse, where they have the Public Safety Academy. Where kids that are coming out of that program can be recruited into crossing guards. Be able to get their sixty credits through the Pittsburgh Promise. And then apply for public safety positions. If if we could create a program like that. We can not only see a more diversified public safety. Organization within the city, but would be recruiting people from neighborhoods. To be the public safety officials and so I.
A geographic element is important from what I'm hearing on the ground too.
I'm sure because not everybody has a car. And a lot of the times in order to be able to take a bus, you have to take it four times to be able to.
Can't go neighborhood to neighborhood very easily.
And you have to take go home and then come back. So it's, yeah, I I I get you. But just thinking about the those two parts of it. If there's an interest in putting together a program, we would be interested in working with you on that.
Thank you, I'll stop there, appreciate your answers.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman, and I just want to add to that, that we did look into that last year with the crossing guards and it was something contractual. Because it was an issue last year and the year before, we've looked into it since then. But with that said, could we have Councilwoman Strasburger?
Can you hear me? All right. Thank you, Council President, thank you, Mayor and and your team for being here today and presenting. I really enjoyed the conversation so far and I'll just ask this. My major concern is, of course, what Councilwoman Kraus brought up is, you know, is the longevity of our ongoing revenue and fiscal fiscal. ongoing revenue and fiscal, fiscal strength and health. But also the, the immediate acute response that's needed to, to the three pandemics that you outlined here that we're facing. And despite a new presidential administration coming in, to be able to, for cities to be able to reap any kind of benefit from a CARES Act in 2021, or that might be coming down the pike sooner than that, we will need in my, in my view, a coalition of different types of mayors and local officials advocating for that. So that it's not just one political party who is perceived to be benefiting from it, that it's, you know, Democratic and Republican mayors from across Pennsylvania who would be, who would be, who would be benefiting from that and making the case there. And I, I worry that any next iteration of that aid package could, you know, go to states, could go to business owners, but could bypass cities altogether. Do you have that kind of coalition of mayors that are, I mean, I know that you're, you're always in touch with mayors from around the, the region and around Pennsylvania. Is there a unified movement lobbying together for aid and, and an updated aid package to come to cities outside of Philadelphia with, you know, cities that are run by both Democratic and Republican mayors?
Yeah, I, I would, I would say that through the US Conference of Mayors, it is a very strong bipartisan coalition. The mayors of Miami, Mayor Suarez, Mayor Betsy Price of Fort Worth, Mayor of Oklahoma City, who are all Republicans or all the lobbying effort and trying to, to actually get something done. We had the same thing, by the way, with gun coalition in not only getting Republican mayors, but Republican police chiefs from the Southwest and other parts of the country, trying to lobby the Senate Republicans. But that fell short. The, the conversations, and we had a conversation, I believe it was last Friday, not this past Friday, but the Friday before with President-elect's new head of intergovernmental affairs. There were 20 mayors on the line from both parties. And the, the number one issue was a relief package for cities. The number two issue was an infrastructure bill that would address repairing crumbling infrastructure, not building new, but building to repair. And then there were a number of issues that, that came up, but the lobbying efforts in the US Conference of Mayors and the National League of Cities has been bipartisan and has been around support of the HEROES Act. And as it has passed the House. Will that have to be modified? Probably. But at least that's what we're lobbying for at this point.
And just an update or a follow-up. Thank you for, for that answer. That's helpful to know. Is there anything that's being done to assure that if cities, if, if there's funding that should be coming either to directly to business owners and individuals and/or cities, that it is not being held up by Harrisburg?
The exact thing that every mayor has said, that there needs to be, it needs to be direct. So in the HEROES Act, it follows community development block grant criteria that would allow the money to come directly into cities. As you know, cities over 500,000 received that assistance this year. But it's the cities under 500,000 that were left out. So this would not only apply to a city like Pittsburgh, this would also apply to a city like Altoona or Erie or Butler. It would be across the board based upon the C D B G guidelines where it is based upon need.
Thank you. Those are all the questions I have right now. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Councilman. And can we have Councilman Kalkil?
Great, great. Thank you. And thank you for being here, Mayor and Chief Gilman and team. It's good to see you all. You all look healthy and safe. And that's great news. So. So, you know, I didn't come in with any set questions as far as the budget goes. But as we went along and I heard other conversations, I just started jotting things down. So I'm pretty much going to be all over the board here, but we'll go from one to the other and in a timely manner. First of all, I want to comment on PLI. You know, I, I agree with Councilwoman Gross. I think that's one department. Being a contractor, knowing many contractors and people who call me, you know, not having the right staffing there stops people from doing jobs, stops homeowners from getting jobs done and just creates, you know, a, a real nightmare. So, and am I right? And, and Sarah, I really like Sarah. I think she's a, a very good appointment. Am I right? I mean, they're really self-sufficient. Whereas, so if we were to add staff there, I mean, they're one of the few departments that actually create revenue.
Oh, you're absolutely right. And, you know, I, I will ask Dan to get into more of the details within it. Basically, when we came in and the reason we hired Mara Kennedy was because she had a history of being able to utilize technology. That department, the old BBI, was running off of paper and pencil. And now we have the ability to do the permitting online. That's not a great advancement. That should have been done in the nineties. But what we've seen is a, a pretty much overhaul within that department. But as you state, we have to be held to the amount of time that it takes from a permit being applied for to the completion of that permit. And if those numbers are not going down, then we have to look at it as an issue of not having adequate resource. I would love to hire an additional five inspectors and to be able to put them out there to train them into cross inspection so that once they're on site, they can be doing more than one specific job. If council has areas as they go through this budget where they see where the funding for any of the other departments could be applied to that, our administration will work with you. At this point, we tried to keep a budget that didn't cost anybody a job. And I'd just ask Dan to be a little bit more specific than I was, Councilmember, in answering your question.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, certainly PLI is a revenue generator. I don't know that adding one inspector equals, I don't know that it's not. I, we'd have to do the math on, does adding one electrical inspector equal a hundred and, you know, $6,000 in additional permit fees being acquired by the city? I just don't know the answer to fair and a good question. And I can ask Kevin and Sarah to do some more analysis with Bill or Bannack on that. For you.
It almost seems as if it can almost be a wash. If we add people there, hopefully it creates more, you know, equal amount of revenue. I think right now their, their operating budget and their revenue is kind of awash, I think. I don't, I don't think they cost taxpayer money in order to support them, do they?
I will get you, I will get you that answer. I don't have it in front of me. What I would say, though, two points specific to this budget. We did see our, our response time this year and improved, but what we did see is a drop in the number of permit applications overall, not a surprise during COVID. It wasn't as big a drop as you might have thought, or I might have thought, but there was a drop in, in permit applications this year. Largely more on the commercial side. We actually did see an increase in residential. People are taking the time to do, do things at their house. But fewer people are opening businesses or doing large-scale commercial. So adding budgeted positions right now may not equal increased applications as it might in, in other years.
Right. Okay, that, that's good on that. I, I do want to address, you know, the, our Pittsburgh Police Department with you, Mayor. I often say to many people, you know, in my community that I don't think this mayor takes enough credit for the changes that have occurred since you've come on. And I think the, I guess the, the policies that you put in place with this police department, going back to say the Pride Parade, I remember that incident. I think that's what helped us get through these 100 protests without major incident. And all in all, I tell people, anybody who wants to hear, if you had a contract for me to sign and said after 100 protests, we would have had this many, whatever you want to call them incidents, mistakes, I would have signed on the dotted line. Would you help us well, Mayor?
I, I, first off, the, the only reason that things are changing is because there is a willingness within the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police to change. Without that, from the internal side, it just doesn't happen. And what that requires is a buy-in by the officers themselves that community policing lessens crime. Do we have a lot of way to go? Yeah, yeah, we do. But with 1,000 officers, the number of incidents within the city of Pittsburgh, I'm not talking about the national things that are happening or things across Allegheny County, but within the city of Pittsburgh, we've been blessed. We, there have been not only a proper amount of protection and upholding the law that has occurred during these protests. But there has also been the ability for people to protest. A lot of folks don't understand the, the the First Amendment right allows you to protest. And you can protest on the sidewalks and walk down the sidewalks and protest your, as much as you want. But once you decide you're going to block a street or close down a street, you need a permit. Now, how do you enforce that people won't block streets? That's a police officer. And had we gone in and simply told people, we are going to arrest you once you close the street down, which we could have, we would have had chaos. There would have been numerous incidents and they would have involved violence. Instead, we decided to take a different route, which was to extend the ability for people to protest and close down streets. In one incident in Oakland, a young man decided he was going to close down his own streets in areas outside of where the police had created a safety bubble for the protesters. And what he began to do was to close down our access streets from Forbes Avenue to the hospitals. These were the routes that our police had determined needed to remain open for anybody getting to the hospital. Imagine the situation if somebody were being rushed to the hospital and to be shut down by one person on a bicycle with people around him because he simply wanted to do it. He was warned seven times that he was not supposed to be there. And he chose to tell the police, I'm not going to listen to you, then ordered the other bicyclists in order to shut down that street. That incident should have been handled with a uniformed police officer coming up to him and telling him, you have exceeded what is safe for the city of Pittsburgh. And he should have been placed in handcuffs and put into a marked car. I completely disagree with the tactic that was used. That tactic should be utilized when we're going after sex offenders and drug dealers, not after a summary offense. That was what warranted the change within the command. With the other incidents, they're under investigation. I am being charged on federal charges and in federal court of civil rights violations. So I can't really discuss those in detail. But I have seen enough video and I have seen enough testimony to be able to know that there were mistakes on both sides. That there were those that were there to cause problems and those that were there not to talk about Black Lives Matter. But who had their own agenda and their own purpose in causing violence in order to create chaos. And were there officers there who overreacted? Yes, but I'll wait for the OMI investigation to be completed before taking any action on that. There is a balance that needs to be held. I, I can only try to explain this to you. A mayor cannot be an activist. You can't choose one side and to be able to then be able to lead. When these types of controversial issues come up, there has to be somebody who is going into it with a level head, who is being unable to look at it through both sides. Now, does that mean the police are angry at me? Yes. Does that mean the activists are angry at me? Yes. Does that mean I'm doing my job right? Yes.
Yep. And I'll, and I'll say again, you know, I was pleased to see in the budget that you didn't make, I would say knee-jerk cuts to the police department, you know? I think at this point, it would be premature and irresponsible on our part to do that. I, like you, believe in police reform. We need new tactics, new policies, things of that nature. And I'd love to think that a team of social workers could take police duties from them, from keeping them from going to calls. I'm not convinced of that yet. I think we have to see it. The only model I've seen was from the county Human Services, which, you know, I kind of liked what I saw there. So. So, but we're far away from seeing if this can actually cut down on 311 or 911 calls where police don't have to respond. And I'm not really looking for a response to that, but I'm just saying at this point, you know, you did the right thing in the budget overall. You know, can argue that we're kicking down the can, kicking the can down the road until July. But I think that's the right thing too. You know, no sense in sending panic throughout your departments as to who's going to be cut, who's not. We're all hoping for the federal relief. You know, if we don't get it, it sounds like each department is prepared with the cuts that they have to make. And yeah, that's going to be devastating across the board. So. But I think we'll get it and I think everything will be fine. And I hope revenues come back from the point of the amusement tax and parking tax and every, every other place that we're losing revenue. So, so I don't want to eat up any more time. I just really wanted to say overall, you know, you did a great job throughout those protests. Your police department, I've worked closely with your command staff, nothing but top-notch professionals. But I'm going to put that uniform. You know, with the, the critics out there, you know, I can't even say enough about the job that they do. So. Yeah, with that, that's it for me. But thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Councilman. I would also like to ask that when there is a bill that is presented asking the help of city council to join with the Fraternal Order of Police, to join with the Pittsburgh firefighters, to join with the medics and others remind Senator Toomey what's at stake. And that the relief that is coming to the cities will be able to allow that, that July scenario of losing 634 employees, the majority of which will be public safety, will not have to be realized. I don't think Senator Toomey understands that that is in his hands. And to be able to be a part of the solution and not simply part of the problem.
Good. That's great to know. I'll do my part. I did have one more thing. I'm sorry I had to ask about. And, you know, I really judge any mayor by their departments. And for the most part, you have really great people in your departments. Two in which that I chair is DOMI with Director Ricks and Director Gable, who will be, we will badly losing because I think he really does a fantastic job. But, but I'm also confident in the leadership he has behind him. So I think we probably won't miss a beat there. But I did want to say one thing they both brought up to me, which is really concerning. And I actually went through this in, you know, some infrastructure needs as to the Brookline, you know, deck hockey rink and trying to get a plumber or trying to get an electrician. You know, they stressed to me, and I understand this problem, that, you know, we cannot hire contractors from outside the city of Pittsburgh and we can't find them, right? from outside the city of Pittsburgh and we can't find them, right?
Yeah. We've had a plumber position that has been opened for, I don't know, three years, maybe. We're offering fifty-five thousand dollars in full benefits. The problem is plumbers are making eighty thousand dollars. Um, and so, uh, w- w- we see this, uh, not only within those skilled positions, but this is Dan was saying, within environmental services, trying to find drivers. You know, drivers are being paid Teamsters eighty thousand dollars as well, and we're paying them forty-five or fifty. And so, you know, when you have that, that type of competition, because the economy in those areas has really taken off, uh, it, it becomes difficult. What we have to do is create workforce development opportunities for young people within the city and put them under those positions as they're graduating high school and, uh, giving them the opportunities. And we have to work with our trades in order to be able to train them. We have good union positions, uh, we just can't compete with private industry.
Right. And, and, and if one final note, I'll just say, I want to thank you in, in Chief Gilman for addressing my infrastructure needs, buildings that need knocked down, lots that need cleared, roads that are caving in. So, you know, um, my first, what, three and a half years in here, uh, you know, I couldn't be more pleased with address, you're addressing critical needs, I feel. And I ride up and down a main avenue as a contractor and I would see a building, I think that thing needs to go. And, you know, you've been quick to respond on that and, um, you know, so I appreciate that. And beach view is changing by the day and necessary things. We just created a beautiful new view there from knocking that building down that was falling. So, so, um, I think people are excited about it. And, you know, we look forward to working with you for another four years.
So that part of it, I, I'm just, just going to throw it right back at you because I hear from people in your district how they're seeing more stuff getting done. Uh, I, these were longstanding problems, uh, that had not been addressed, that it may be as simple as an empty lot uh, that's being maintained. But the way that you prioritize makes it very easy for us to be able to do that. Uh, instead of just throwing everything at us, uh, you let us know, this is what I need done right now. And here's the next two after that. And that helps us to be able to work with Public Works and the other, uh, departments in order to actually get it done. So I just want to thank you for putting the priorities of the community into uh, bite-sized projects that are actually able to get done.
No, you're welcome, and I appreciate that. And, uh, I do have a list, another list that's developing, and I'll sit down with Chief Gilman on that. All right.
I'm sure you do. Okay.
Thank you, Councilman, and we have Councilman Wilson.
Uh, yes, thanks, Madam President. And thank, and thank you, Mayor Paduto and your staff for, for being here and answering all these, uh, critical questions. I just wanted to say, as a new councilman on the North Side, you know, I'm pleased to see, uh, that you, the mayor, has, has, uh, you know, from my research, has, has proposed to invest over eleven million dollars and, uh, directly into District One on the North Side. And, you know, there's also citywide, uh, functions and programs that my district will benefit from that you're putting into the budget. So I really, you know, appreciate that. And I know the people on the North Side do as well. So I want to ask a question about, uh, how your office, um, sees, uh, you know, what your role is in, in terms of the relationship between the mayor's office, the community, and then also the Office of Community and Health, Health and Safety, the new, the new office.
Yeah. Um, again, I'm going to rely upon Dan to be able to go through the breakdown of it. Uh, but is we launch this program, um, the idea is we, it's interesting, the city of Pittsburgh used to have a health department. I didn't realize that, but in the nineteen twenties, I think nineteen thirties, the city had its own health department. And then by the time that most people lived outside of the city, uh, instead of inside in Allegheny County, the health department became a county function. And we have not had even an employee that worked on health-related issues. With, with this department is looking at is what can be done in order to help a person who finds himself in a bad situation in order to be able to improve their life status. Um, and that's a pretty tall order, especially for a municipality. And y- you wouldn't have a hundred and thirty municipalities all doing this. Uh, that's why it's a county function, Health and Human Services, and not a city function. But what we realize is we have a lot more people that come into the city to seek those types of services from third party, from other areas of the county and surrounding counties. And the only way that we're dealing with them is through the police. Um, is there a better tool to be able to deal with that situation? And we believe so. You know, growing up as a kid and Scott Township, Sharters Valley had two centers. Uh, it had Woodville State Hospital and Mayview State Hospital, and they were full. And they were dealing with people that were, uh, had needs for mental health issues. They're gone. But the people aren't gone. The only difference is, is that instead of being treated at a state institution, they're being treated at Allegheny County Jail. And we, there has to be a better way in order to be able to treat that. Do we still need the police? Absolutely. You know, the most dangerous situation is domestic. And a police officer needs to be there to make sure that everyone is safe. So when that call comes in about somebody screaming as they're walking down the street in downtown Pittsburgh, the first response is the police to make sure that they're safe. But then it needs to be handed off to somebody who can make sure that that person is getting the help that they need. Maybe it's addiction, maybe it's homelessness, maybe it's mental health, most likely it's all three. And we need to be able to have that at a twenty-four, seven situation. And it needs to be mobily accessible for all of the city of Pittsburgh. Going into the specifics of it, Dan, if you want to talk about OCHS and how it will be administered?
OCHS, uh, thanks to, uh, the council members, I think, uh, is having its own budget hearing on Thursday. Uh, Lindsay and Laura will re- represent, uh, and have its own time. So I won't go into too much detail. Uh, but Councilman, it's important to note, OCHS is very intentionally Laura, who will run, uh, the, the department, will have a dual kind of reporting, uh, to me, the mayor, however you want to see it, uh, and the Public Safety Director. It is not under Public Safety and very intentionally so, but has to be closely coordinated with Public Safety. And that is the intent, um, with the new initiative. And, and you spoke at the launch of that initiative, seeing Office of Community Health and Safety and, uh, GBI and Shetara, uh, and her Stop the Violence work as sister kind of quote unquote agencies, uh, working together. Um, knowing that there are, are two paths that need to run parallel, uh, with each other uh, to improve the health and safety of our neighborhoods and of our residents. Uh, OCHS will have, uh, roughly five hundred thousand dollars in personnel funding transferred to it out from outside the, from the Stop the Violence Trust Fund, uh, that City Council created, uh, to help start the positions, uh, this year. Um, the only current employee, uh, obviously is Laura Schiltz Dover, uh, but we're working with HR, uh, to be able to get those positions posted, uh, January one, so we can start hiring, uh, as quickly as possible, uh, for the positions. We also have some current Vista fellows that will be shifting over, um, i- into the work as well. Uh, a- and really the goal of this department, as, as you know, is to change so that instead of a police interaction, it's a public health interaction. It's stopping the interaction before the police are involved. Being able to actually have our partnership with AHN out there, uh, responding, uh, to people in need, having our outreach workers, having our workers who are working, uh, around PTSD, those working around opioid epidemic, those working in, in drug addiction and alcohol addiction out in the street, working with our residents to actually prevent the interaction with police from ever occurring. How police respond is a different issue and one, uh, that we're also tackling, uh, through training. And hopefully over time, you build out a department where the police don't respond to those types of calls. That's not going to happen on January one, but I think we share, uh, a vision through the mayor's reimagining police initiative to get there. Um, but the key of, of this department is actually stopping that interaction from occurring and having work done ahead of time, uh, to do harm reduction, uh, to help people, uh, before there is that nine-one-one call is ever even made. Uh, and that's the, the budget commitment we're making is actually directly into stopping that interaction from ever taking place.
Well, thank you, because as I continue to have conversations with, uh, my constituents and, um, basically residents of District One that are looking for, uh, you know, different solutions in times of, uh, when they're, you know, seeing calls for, um, you know, adjustments in the budget. And, uh, you know, I talked to them about, uh, this, this new office. And I say, well, you know, will you be a, a partner with me in this? Can, you know, I will add you to, um, you know, my, my circle of people that I'm reaching out to constantly to, you know, get the pulse on, uh, what they need. And so my district is, you know, is, it's not absent of any, any sort of need like that. So, you know, this step is a big one, and I, I appreciate, uh, the effort that is going into this. I realize that's in its infancy and uh, you know, I'm looking forward to being a partner it, with this, with this office. I did have one, um, more basic question. Uh, maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but, you know, when the pandemic happened, my, the number one call, uh, that we got uh, from residents that wanted us to do something was to tow abandoned cars. And, and I bring this up because, you know, the pandemic put people in their place and they, I mean, they were pretty frank with us and said, well, you know, I open my window and I see this car there every day. But that was one thing they were doing. But the other thing they were doing is spending more time in their neighborhood. And then they realized how much the traffic is just incre- I mean, um, you know, how fast cars go on the street and how maybe someone saved some of their streets are. And, you know, I, I'm not looking for, uh, you know, a, a, a big increase in, in this, in this budget for traffic calming. But traffic calming has been such a, a, a call, you know, people calling to my office, um, I mean, that might be the number one request right now. People, how they're using their neighborhood, how we, how they want to see that investment in that small parklet. And, you know, I, I would really, I would like to, you know, I realize this is a conversation with Domi, but, you know, I would, you know, just want to bring this up here in this meeting so that we can, you know, so you know what I'm thinking, which is, you know, how can we figure out some, some solutions for, for these neighborhoods and these streets that are experiencing, um, you know, accidents or speeding and, you know, just, just a better way that everyone can access the street? Because that cuts across all, uh, you know, walks of life in, in my district. It doesn't matter if they don't like the bike lane. They still want a speed hump. You know, th- these are, these are all important efforts that, uh, and I'm sorry, these are all important projects that everyone, uh, wants in, in our neighborhood. And we, you know, they realize that not every single, um, project needs a speed up. But I don't know, do you, do you see this, uh, it, you know? Um, do you, do you see a, a, a dramatic decrease in this type of funding? Because I think it's a, a really good one to, to focus on.
We are increasing it, Bobby. And, and the one thing I would add is this is an operating and a capital conversation. Uh, you know, the May tide and Councilman Cockhill's district that we did last week, uh, which desperately needed, uh, we spent over a hundred thousand dollars in, in capital funds. Um, the, the speed humps and those things are expensive. Um, so while we, we have a lot in the budget for it and can certainly have, uh, Director Ricks go through it with you, it is a combo of the capital needs as, as they're expensive and then also the operating of design. Um, you know, I, Corinne always gets mad at me because I was like, what's so hard? You know, just build the hump and you put them out. But there's a lot of engineering design that goes into it. So it is, it is both the operating of hiring more engineers as we're able to, uh, in PMs in Domey and the capital cost. And it's getting creative. Uh, we're doing three new blinking stop signs or, uh, yield, I'm sorry, yield to pedestrian uh, signs, working with, uh, Councilwoman Kail Smith on, on Grand View. We just did one, uh, at Chateau and Beaver, I believe, at the intersection, and about to do one at Fortieth and Davidson, uh, in Lawrenceville. Um, so it's, you know, how do those work? How does the bump bounce work to narrow the streets? But it is also an enforcement conversation. Um, there is no doubt that, uh, expand, you know, needing the, the traffic division and the enforcement is a critical piece. No matter how much we put in, we find people who, you know, go around the speed humps on Beachwood. And we had to widen the speed humps because they were driving in the parking lane to get around them. People who speed between speed humps, um, there's a, a need for a change in human behavior, uh, with the engineering infrastructure change, uh, and the enforcement. It's got to be the combo of all three to, to achieve the, the Vision Zero goal that we've all adopted for the city.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, I just cannot echo that enough that, you know, as the pandemic ha- um, continues and people stay in their neighborhood in their, you know, in their, in their house, they're constantly like questioning, you know, what's the difference between living here in the city versus somewhere else because of this pandemic? And, um, they enjoy their neighborhood so much and they, I think they just, you know, call in about this one issue. So it's, I'm happy to hear that, um, you know, there's going to be this continued investment. All right, thanks. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Councilman. And so now it's, it's my turn. So I just want to thank you, Mayor, because, um, well, and Dan Gilman, I mean, he answers calls day and night, um, seven days a week. And I just want to thank him for that and for being so available. But I also want to thank you because this is the first time since I've been in office, but also be prior to my, my being serving in office, that I can recall that District Two has ever been number one in the budget for anything. And so, I mean, seeing the work getting done, I'm thinking, wow, this is what it's like being important to a mayor. Because you can see the work getting done in our side of town. And people are commenting all the time that they're seeing such investment in our area and our parks and, and our, um, infrastructure or stairs, the, um, seeing steps done in, in neighborhoods is that haven't, haven't done in years. So I just want to tell you that we see a lot and, um, we're very thankful in our side town. I think you've seen that when you come over here, we have dinner or lunch or have a meeting over here and people greet you and they, I mean, I, I'm always surprised at the amount of accolades you receive, um, because they, people are so open and, and just thanking you. So I just want to thank you for that. And I tell people all the time, we probably disagree ninety percent on, 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 um, how to get to a policy, not, not that we disagree on policy, but usually, uh, on, on our, the way we get there. I said, but you have been so good to our district and so good to our city. So, um, what I care about is the end result. And that's what I think is, you've really shown us a lot of, um, a lot of positive things on our side of town. So I just want to thank you for that. Um, and I'm going to still nag you and still, and still ask for more. So, so, but, but I do want to say that, uh, when we talk about, the only thing I have a concern about is, we have, you know, different concerns, but I have, one of the things I, I, hearing everyone talking about is the, the Office of, um, Community Health and Safety. So I'll wait until we have that meet, that hearing, which is, I think is on tentatively scheduled for Thursday after, uh, the Parks and Rec meeting. So I'll wait for that. But I do want to mention that one of the things that frustrates me is when we talk about, um, doing things differently in policing. And, and I've said this before and I've said, I said it last week, is that long before this was like some fashionable thing or something to talk about. I, I often asked why we weren't doing more in terms of trying to prevent people from getting a criminal record and trying to provide people with the mental health and services that they do need before we send in police officers. But I also thought that, um, you know, we wanted to do it in a way that you didn't, that there was never, that there would, we would start minimizing the need for police, not just all of a sudden do away with police and there's no police around. And, and one of my frustrations has been that I've said this before, is I've been to, I've gotten calls in, at night. And I've gotten calls in the middle of the night and I've gone down into the neighborhoods that have called me or up into the neighborhoods that have called me to see what the issues were. And there were, uh, I can remember one week, um, just about, maybe about a month ago, and there were back-to-back days where I got calls where a social worker, police called for a social worker, um, that we have a contract with, and they did not show up. And so the pu- the community was left to fend for themselves in really difficult situations. So I want to make sure whatever we do, and I'll take this up, you know, during that meeting, whatever we do, we are doing in a way that we are, um, making sure that people are showing up. We're not eliminating any kind of response, um, to people. Because then, then the residents were left to fend for themselves. They, the police had to leave because they got a more, you know, urgent call and on both dates, and the social worker never showed. So residents were sitting there trying to calm one person down who's, who has mental health disorders. And his mother thought the best way to calm him down was to give him alcohol, which only enraged him more. And the, um, then there was a young boy who was threatening to rape the little girl next door. So it was, there was a lot of stuff that was going on and no social work. So I just wanted to talk about how that's important to me, to make sure that residents are getting a response. But I also want to talk about the fact that I've not seen a needs assessment, even though I've asked the county for a needs assessment. And we're talking about paying for the needs assessment when we're talking about struggling. And I know that, you know, you have a good relationship with Rich and as do I. And, um, and I do want to, um, talk with him about this because they get two billion dollars for social services and yet we're going to pay for a needs assessment. And we're not even trying to hold them accountable for the programs we're not getting. We don't even know if what they provide for us are programs that we need. So it's a conversation I want to have with him. It's a conversation I, I would hope that you and he would have. they provide for us are programs that we need. So it's a conversation I want to have with him. It's a conversation I, I would hope that you and he would have. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention. But other than that, I, I have no, um, no further questions. All my colleagues asked a lot, except I, I'm sorry, I do have one other thing. I apologize. My concern, I, I have a huge concern with, we're doing a lot and I want to thank Lindsay and your office for doing a lot with us in terms of getting food into neighborhoods and into people that are really needing and really struggling. But my concern is we're seeing such a need now and there's actually so much help available because of COVID. My concern is what happens to these people that are now relying on COVID funding and things. And then after COVID is gone or hopefully soon, and the money is dried up. How are we going to feed these people? I, I'm worried about what we're going to do. As I just want to put that on your radar too. I'm worried about what's going to happen after COVID. Um, there's a lot of people that are still going to be hurting, still people without jobs. And there are people that are hurting now. They're finally getting help. And I hate to say, but thank God for the COVID money because they're probably getting the help that they waited for years to have. So, I, I'm just worried about what's happening after. Let's just put that out there.
Let me start with that one. I think that what we'll see, at least on a city side, is a continuation of being able to offer some of the services that we, uh, began this year. So what that would mean is within, uh, the Parks Department, more of a focus on being able to provide meals, uh, to families that need food, being able to provide different types of services, uh, that we have, uh, made available through COVID to our critical communities. I, I don't think most Pittsburghers understand that we've created a program for our homeless community that allows those that have been identified, uh, with COVID, uh, we provide free hotel stay for our homeless neighbors, uh, to get them better. And I think that these different programs that we've established and creating an, an additional safety net during the pandemic are things that we're going to have to look at. Uh, I've been, you know, toying with the idea of changing the name because Parks and Recreation are the farthest things that that department is dealing with right now. They're dealing with workforce development, wellness, safety, food insecurity. I mean, i- i- it's a different department right now than it would, what it had been. Going back to the capital investment in District Two, I don't have children. I don't know what it's like at Christmas time to get your kids gifts that I can assure that, you know, there's those years where one of the kids gets more than the others. And I'm happy that District Two is for a couple of years now. Don't expect it every year. Uh, we have to spread it out, but, um, it's more of a sense of the,
Amen.
Realization. It hadn't been getting its fair share for a number of years. And, uh, there were some projects that really got behind and there were some areas that were frankly embarrassing. That, uh, the neighbors deserved much better. Going back to OCHS, um, I can give you one example of how policing is changing. This summer, we had an incident, uh, outside my house, where one of the activists, uh, was, uh, being arrested and they were in a vehicle. And usually when somebody refuses to leave the vehicle or if they are under the, the process of arrest, uh, the police will, evacuate the situation. So SWAT will come in, they'll break the windows of the vehicle and then they'll pull the person out. The OCHS model is a different model and it was sort of implemented that, that evening as well. Instead of using a SWAT team, the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police reached out to the DA's office and a mediator was brought in. The mediator and a family member then spoke with the person. They then came up with a situation in which they would open the car door and would, uh, surrender to the police. They demanded a, a African-American officer arrest them. So a black officer was brought in and they demanded that it be a female. And so a black female officer was brought in. The person was then arrested and the car keys were turned over to one of his associates so they could take the car back to his home and it wouldn't be impounded. Same result. Quite different process. That's the idea of what we talk about in how to de-escalate a situation in order to be able to make sure that the law is being followed. But it doesn't have to be in a manner that escalates or inflates the, the type of tension that's already present. I hope this budget is sort of reflective of that as well. Because I had to go through those budgets in 2002, 2003, 2004, where we had to close all the rec centers and we had to close all the pools and we had to close all the senior centers and we had to lay off a hundred police officers. What I tried to do is present to you a budget that is less on the trauma. Does not involve having to make that decision over which city employees will not have a job come January 1st, but allows us the time in order to be able to try to get Congress to do what is right. In many ways, this budget is a reflection of the priorities of this city. Coming from a neighborhood level of what neighborhoods want under peace and safety and investment. And then looking forward to that partnership that is critical with Harrisburg and with Washington and being able to create a more resilient city. As I spoke when at the beginning, we're facing three major crises at one time. We're living through the economic collapse of 1932. We're living through the great global pandemic of 1918. And we're living through the civil unrest of 1968. All at one time. The one thing that we should offer to the people of Pittsburgh is a little bit of peace of mind and serenity that their city government will provide a less traumatic way to deal with these crises in order to be able to see 2021 and in 2022, building it back. So I just want to thank every for their professionalism and for their dignity. In allowing this process to not be politicized, but to recognize what is best for our citizens and the neighborhoods they call home.
Thank you, Mayor. And, um, one last time, do you have anything? I know I asked you earlier on.
No, thank you. Um, you called to me the first time I was dealing with my children. Um, just three quick comments, um, not really questions. Um, first, I just want to thank you, Mayor, or at least notify you anyway, that, Director Paulus has been very helpful in this process, um, at least for me, helping me understand how we're, how we're getting to the budget that was, was presented. Um, he, he's been very helpful. Since I just want to sort of publicly thank him and thank you for allowing him to work with our budget office and myself through this whole process. So that's one. Two, I forget what you called it, but whatever the tool or the mechanism that you want to have presented before council that looks at the various ways that we can look, look at our tax structure. I really look forward to that. Um, also think that after that is presented, that collectively, to the extent that we can, whether it has to be like this on Zoom or the extent that we can socially distance and actually be in Harrisburg for a day, I welcome the opportunity to work with you, um, to have a conversation in Harrisburg about how our tax structure must change in order, in order for us to be resilient moving forward. Um, so I just look forward to that opportunity. And then three, and this may help us transition into the Office of Equity. I think you called it, I wrote it down, the Pitt Star, um, program. In order, one of the ways that we're going to sort of come out of this, um, economy that we're currently in is actually, in my opinion, through investing in communities of color. Nationally, we see, and I think we see it locally as well. The number one entrepreneur is a woman of color in our country. And so investing in communities that have historically not been investing in and helping them create businesses, helping them with the small businesses that Councilwoman Gross was speaking about, really investing in that, which is sort of the idea also behind, um, avenues of hope is one way to help us come out and rebuild a stronger economy. But one of the challenges that continues to plague those communities is access to capital. It's not that whether they're a developer, whether they want to open up a hair salon, whatever it may be, being able to walk into one of the traditional banks is, isn't simply there in the manner in which our white counterparts have that ability, to be quite frank. And so I've been for a while trying to figure out how to crack that nut as well. And maybe looking at the model that you're looking at for the arts community could also be beneficial and looking at sort of the minority business and the minority development community as well. So just a thought that I wanted to put out there, you can respond, you don't have to. But just sort of three thoughts that I had coming out of this conversation, but thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I'll just say this, if you, if you're looking at stages, theaters, restaurants, imagine what $10 million of, uh, equity fund could mean. You know, in a rotating type of way where it's a no interest or low interest, or it's a payback through investment or whatever it is. If, if you had that in order to be able to invest and if we're not able to provide that through government funding, then can we create the type of partnership we created with PNC Bank for the avenues of hope? Create a model where it is people from the entertainment industry, chefs from Pittsburgh and others that are investing back into that part of our community. And being able to provide the needed equity and then the expertise in order to make the, those businesses successful. Like I said, it's something we've been toying with, but, uh, the conversation is at that point now, I think, where, uh, we can start to identify individuals and approach them to see if they're interested.
Agreed, agreed a hundred percent, um, in terms of the equity conversation. One of the things I'd also wanted to do at the URA, I don't, this, this probably is not the year to be able to do it, is also create sort of a rev- a revolving loan fund, that small businesses and developers could tap into, especially for pre-development assistance, um, which is one of the hardest pieces, uh, hardest dollars to come across, um, in order to move developments forward. Um, and then, and then along those lines, to the extent that we believe Harrisburg could be helpful in this, um, in this effort to rebuild historical black business districts, I'm wanting to have that conversation as well.
Look forward to having those conversations with you and working with you to make those into programs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And I don't know if there's a second round, but I just was like to remind, members that we have two additional hearings and then we recess and come back at 1:30. So we don't have much time. So if you do have additional questions, please keep them brief. Is anybody else, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Council President Smith. Um, I want to, I'll bring this up again with the URA. I think it's, uh, later today, but I have, um, I wanted to also commend the URA, the mayor and Councilwoman Lavelle for starting that kind of revolving loan fund with the micro loan programs, that council also just a year ago transferred an extra $250,000. It was one of my budget amendments last year to the URA to focus some of the micro lending on childcare facilities. Lot, almost entirely women-owned small businesses throughout the city that are neighborhood-serving, critical frontline needs right now. And largely minority owned as well. And part of our care industry that we know we need to strengthen and reinvest in, we know it makes for stronger Pittsburgh. It helps families. It helps the workers and it helps people build their own businesses. Um, and we luckily got it off the ground before COVID hit. So I just want to commend the URA for launching that so aggressively at the beginning of 2020. And I really look forward to talking about that more later today, but I fully support. And I've always been, I've been critical of the URA and its major real estate development. But I've always been supportive of its small business lending and small business investment for creating local wealth. So, uh, I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you, President Smith, for all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman. No other members? No additional questions? Thank you, Mayor. Um, we'll be, we'll move on now to our, to the Office of Equity. And, uh, Bill Urbanic, do you have something to read for that?
Yes, I do.
Let me just thank the mayor again. Thank you, Mayor, very much for joining us. We appreciate it.
Very robust conversations. Fantastic.
Thank you. Uh, Dan, are you going to stay on with Majestic and Lindsay? Or lose Dan?
I think Dan got a phone call.
Okay. Uh, Lindsay and Majestic, are you guys able to, uh, take this?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Council.
We're good, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Have a good day. Mr. Urbanic, I'm sorry, Director Urbanic?
Sure. The, uh, start off with, uh, the mission of the Office of Equity, which is to normalize social and racial equity within the city government and our communities. The staff works closely with community partners, government agencies, experts and communities to inform and implement equitable policies, programs, procedures and expenditures to make Pittsburgh a community for all. The Office works to see Pittsburgh where all city residents have access to opportunities necessary to satisfy their essential needs, advance their wellbeing and achieve their full potential. Where social and economic outcomes cannot be projected based upon race, gender, age or sexual orientation. The Bureau has several, uh, different areas that it addresses, uh, youth educate, youth and education, gender equity, economic opportunity, business inclusion, which is where, uh, the MBE WB program is housed, NDB. Critical communities and special initiatives. The budget for the Office of Equity, again, we're talking about reductions for this year. The total budget is $1,329,000. Uh, that's a decrease of what was anticipated in last year's five-year plan. Of $380,000 or 22.3%. Total full-time positions, 14. That's a reduction of one. Reductions in that first six months of the year. Uh, our Critical Communities Initiative manager was eliminated. Non-salary expansion expenditures were reduced by $37,000. A professional and technical, uh, services reduced by $30,000. Catering, uh, $6,000 eliminated and cleaning of $1,200 was eliminated. The anticipated, uh, July 1st, workforce reductions would be a reduction of $177,000 based on the average salary of four, that would be four employees. The anticipated workforce reductions, again, in both the Office of Mayor and Equity are 40% higher than those of other businesses or, uh, of other bureaus and departments. The Office of Equity does not oversee any trust funds or capital projects. And with that, uh, Council President?
Thank you, Director Urbanic. And, uh, do we want to start with Majestic? Do you want, you have something you want to start with? Presentation?
Yes. Yes. And thank you, uh, Madam President. Just really wanted to talk about kind of on the heels of, uh, what Mayor Paduto, uh, spoke about was that, uh, we're, we're living in a really unique time in regard to the work of thinking about equity. One, obviously the economic impacts that, um, have occurred this year that in many senses has, uh, had an outsized impact on gender, race, uh, neighborhood. And the things that we traditionally know have been the challenges within not just the city of Pittsburgh, but the entire country, right? Race and gender and class and, uh, you know, segregation are not unique to Pittsburgh. They are national issues as we see with the second reckoning of sorts, um, looking at the, uh, racial reckoning and, and the things that have been happening in, in our country around race, um, from local, local, uh, demonstrations to national demonstrations and from local shifts in behavior to national shifts in behavior. And then the third one i- is also this reality of health. And OCHS will have a conversation, but I do think it's important to really, uh, note the health disparities that were talked about in the Gender Equity Report last year that we see came to pass locally and nationally around the health disparities and, and further aggravating what was already, already challenges. So for us this year, it's been, uh, to pivot, it's been uh to pivot, it's been to be able to do the things that we set out to do, that we know were structural, that we know were programmatic, that we know were important to our citizens, to council and to the mayor and his leadership. But as uh you know, uh Chief Powell and I will speak about also a pivot of making sure people are fed, working with departments and working with O M B to make sure resources get to the appropriate organizations. Because of highlighted challenges uh that we've had this year, so we've had to uh stay the road on some things, but also pivot on other things as well as try to make sure we're advancing policy. We're advancing um you know, from a policy perspective, things that will make the city uh better going forward. So it's been a unique opportunity to serve um and being able to partner with so many council members as well as um departments and other uh stakeholders. So just wanted to be able to share that that's like kind of the framework that is, that's been uh what our year has been like, and I wanted to give Chief Powell an opportunity to to handle.
Yeah, I'd like to give Chief Powell an opportunity too. I'm not as sure who I should have called on first.
No, no, it's fine. We work, we work together. I'm the, I'm the, the chief, I'm the head of the office, but we work together from a policy perspective and a programmatic perspective to uh to do the work we do.
And you're a great team.
Thank you.
President, uh just very briefly, I'd I'd want to add um just to make sure that council and those uh listening understand and are clear about the roles and initiatives within the Office of Equity. Included, we have a manager that works on youth and early childhood work. Anything from the Valley Partner Imagination Library uh to working with uh uh community stakeholders to uh ensure that the two million dollars for the childhood fund is is being worked through and exacted to uh early childhood centers. Uh we have someone that works on welcoming Pittsburgh, which is our initiative on immigrants, migrants and refugees. During the pandemic and outside, they've done fantastic work. We've levied a um half a million dollar cash assistance program for uh folks who are not able to receive federal stimulus checks. Uh we helped over five hundred individual residents in the city, in the surrounding municipalities, getting them cash. Again, that they were not able to receive because of their immigration status. They've also uh worked on the census, ensuring that we've had a record number of participants there as well as making sure that during COVID, um we are providing culturally competent services. So in particular, where there are some um cultural concerns about uh making sure that information about COVID is being translated correctly, um that we're making sure that we have programming that's appropriate to some of the cultural differences that some of our immigrant migrant and refugee populations work through. They've been fantastic in terms of providing testing, uh providing supports, including a weekly call with providers within the welcoming space to ensure that resource sharing um and support were were uh available for for all. Included as well in the Office of Equity is our business and growth, uh business growth and inclusion work. From working with uh planning as well as small businesses to ensure, again, during the pandemic, they're able to transition to either uh outside eating, um going online so that their businesses are still able to function. As well as making sure that folks are connected to the resources that at the U R A, like the micro loan program and others. We have a My Brothers Keeper Coordinator. Uh My Brothers Keeper is the Obama Initiative where uh there is a focus specifically on black men and boys uh from a policy and programmatic perspective. That person there works on uh engaging uh community members and stakeholders within the kind of youth space to ensure that they are connected to the resources that M B K has uh at the national level as well as the trust fund that it it has outside of the city. Uh additionally, we have a critical communities manager. Um we've talked about uh their work extensively and we'll talk about it more on Thursday as they're transitioning to lead the Office of Community Health and Safety. Within the Office of Equity, we also work on L G B T Q I plus issues. From creating a advisory council to move to a commission as well as making sure that uh our policies within the city um speak to equity in that sense. Our M W B E work is also located within the Office of Equity, making sure that we are hitting above and beyond our eighteen and seven percent M W B E goals. Uh and then lastly, the policy team, which I manage directly, is located underneath the Office of Equity. Our job is to support both the mayor's office and the managers within the Office of Equity to make sure that we are writing, researching and crafting policy uh that that further the mayor's vision. I can, if it's, you know, defer to you, Council President, but whatever is easiest, we can go through specific accomplishments for each uh manager or each initiative, or we can kind of talk generally about the office. But there are a lot of moving pieces with the Office of Equity and and um we have a fantastic group of folks that that do this work day in, day out and want to make sure that council uh is aware of the fantastic work that they do.
So I think we'll um have council members um ask, open it up for members first. And then if there's something that you need to say that we haven't touched upon, then we'll give you that few minutes at the end just to say whatever it is that you'd like to, to make sure that we might have missed or acknowledged that. And I want to say for me personally, this is one of the offices I pray work with the most, um other than Dan Gilman. So I just want to thank you all very much for the work that you do. Do we have uh members have any questions? Comments? Councilman Lavelle? Okay, I can't believe we don't have, oh, Councilwoman Gross.
I think Councilman Wilson wants to raise his hand first, actually.
I I apologize, I'm going back and forth on my screen like this.
If you don't mind, because I I wanted to um, I have another engagement I wanted to try and see, but um yeah, I just have one question. Um I see that the, you know, the critical, that was Laura Dragowski's position. And since she'll make the transition, um can you just elaborate on like what that gap looks like? And or is that whole responsibility being transferred over to the the new health and safety uh office?
Yeah, I think um what'll, what you'll see now is before it was within our office and we were trying to make sure that we were serving as, you know, that facilitator um of the challenges of kind of what I call health in the public sphere and then also public safety, right? And so now you'll have that office that will be able to work with all offices, but also directly keeping a relationship. You know, within the mayor's office and the Office of Equity around really keeping intersectional and as the um Chief Gilman talked about, the relationship between the enhanced engagement and enhanced investment in the public safety work that um many of our G V I work, G V I folks are doing and as well as many of the communities have been doing for so long. That really connecting tying those in. And so we've really been a part of how do we connect and tie that traditional public health work done around violence as a public health issue with some of the other challenges around public health and I mean like health. Some of the challenges we see that are happening in the public sphere with addiction, uh homelessness, opioid challenges. And really, you know, merging and making sure they're working together in coordinating that and then making sure that that's connected to the communities, to various communities that we also work with. So it will be something that won't kind of go away and over there um as connected to equity, but directly having an equity lens and making sure it's connected to the broader vision of making sure that public health, whether it's violence or some of our uh mental, emotional and other health issues are centered within the equity lens of race and communities that traditionally have not been as engaged in that way.
All right, great. Yeah, thanks. Thanks for elaborating on that. And I can't, I can't uh speak enough about how I'm, you know, interested in in bringing um, you know, G V I and different group. You know, violence prevention, violence prevention in general, and having those outreach workers in my, in my district alongside the outreach for homelessness um as well. And I think that's just going to be such a big part moving forward. I know especially for myself, even just, you know, making better partnerships with what already exists. But also seeing this expand in in ways and how your office will be um, you know, be be joining in the efforts. I was at a community meeting recently where um, you know, I brought a lot of the the city police staff to the meeting, but also um Cornell and and Ty Lee to the Cornell Jones and Ty Lee Thompson meeting. And it was a good moment because um, you know, the community, we have, we have parts of the community that really want to see more police presence. And um they're asking the police and the police keep saying, we're kind of spinning our wheels here. We need some other avenues that we need to go down. And to really hear that repeated twice by the off, by the commanders and the officers was really a moment where we were able to move on, move on, move the conversation into uh violence prevention and what's needed there and how the investment that communities need in that way. And uh we were able to, you know, open the conversation up to the community for them to really understand, you know, just really what what the name of your office is, just equity and and how we um, you know, get that out to the the communities that need it the most. So, you know, for spinning our wheels, well, let's start talking about uh, you know, what we should be uh focusing on, how we really fill those gaps and the places that need it the most. So I really appreciate your office and I'm looking forward to see how your office is going to communicate with this new office and also how um, you know, I can be a partner in that. So yeah, so uh Councilwoman Gross, I appreciate, let me go first and uh I'll leave it at that. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, President Smith. Um I have a couple of things I want to follow up on. Director Powell, you mentioned, first of all, the two million dollars that council, the Council Women's Caucus put into place for childcare some years ago, I think it was twenty seventeen. I don't think council is up to date. Oh, Director Lane, you've got, Chief Lane, you've got your that'll help. Um the um we haven't gotten updated, right? The last thing I think we've heard is that none of the dollars had moved out to actually, to actual outcome. So could you update us on that?
Absolutely. So as I'm sure you're aware, um especially with your role with the Gender Equity Commission, had it has been very difficult to move that money out um from the trust fund because of some concerns that our law department has had um with uh how those those funds are dispensed. And I'm happy and pleased to say that we have been working very closely uh with a lot of equipment and have come to a space where they are comfortable with uh the dispersal method as as written. Um and so hopefully, and we'll have more um, a a more robust update for council um as there has to be uh most likely vote in order to, again, dispose that money and get it back into the community. But Tiffany has been working very closely to make sure that the goals of the
Cooperative agreement with a nonprofit that we didn't know who they were. We didn't get all details, but then this year you renewed the cooperative agreement to be with the county.
Yes.
So it changed the, so you know, nullified the last corporate agreement and created a new cooperative agreement with the county. So that is, the county is going to do kind of, if you could maybe talk us through like which
So prior, um the county has a pass-through, if you will, or a space that they use to receive uh resources from externally. But it, the actual organization is not a part of the county, they have a relationship with the county. So legally, um our law, you know, legally, the law department said, well, the M O U is not actually with the county. It will be with the pass-through, which was a challenge, right? And that was the nonprofit that we had spoke on. So what we were able to do is actually work with the county and create a M O U with the actual county with D H S versus the pass-through that they traditionally use for the resources so that we could, we could get past that impasse, if you will.
And that language.
Because the county provides most of its services through its social service subcontractors. An initial cooperative agreement between this was between the city and one of the subcontractors.
Yes.
It was a nonprofit, most of them are nonprofit social service agencies, the things you see in your neighborhoods that are the places you would go to in crisis or for services. And then so this year, we dirt contracted, we did the cooperative agreement, which is like a M O U or or a contract light with the, with the county itself.
Yes.
Okay, so, and but the goal is what?
The goal is to get, make sure that we get resources um with.
I mean, I'm just providing a little bit of substance for our listeners. It's a big, important, timely topic. So we want to say what does, what are resources going to look like?
The resources will go in order to help organize uh, you know, uh childcare organizations and childcare facilities. Make sure they get access to the resources that will allow them to improve their services and also.
The rates, right? Right? Just like kind of uh the STAR system, I'm sorry to dig right into this, but I I just kind of, I I won't, I won't go on for long, but right? Keystone Stars subsidizes the rates, right? If you are a higher rated facility, then you get some income. So you don't have to charge your customers as much. That is the kind of thing we, I would hope we could do with this money. I don't, you know, again, we we can have a separate briefing about it and I think it's overdue and we really, we have a lot of pressure on us to do more for childcare centers. Um and this is the pot of money we created, so.
If I may, very quickly, I think that's exactly the point is to uh use those resources within the two million dollars to invest in particular um uh pieces of either equipment or capital equipment that'll move them up in the stars uh ranking. So uh you'll have, say, a particular number of books will move you from a two-star facility to a three-star facility. If you have a different enter egress, uh you know, you might need a railing on your, your um your entrance, like that will get you to move up in the star ranking. And so it's not just uh, you know, funding for funding sake or trying to beautify a space. It's more how do we make sure that we're investing in things that will improve that particular center's ranking so that we're able to provide better services and a higher quality, um higher quality care to that individual, to that child.
Okay, we've been waiting for a few years. I don't want to belabor this point. We have been waiting for a few years and this, if there's, if there was any time to move it, it would be now. Um and if we see, we're going to be talking to the R A at one thirty, and if they have added the capacity to move some of that, to move their money, it may be that council needs to look at switching to make their fund more robust too. Just an idea out there, but um let me switch the topic a little bit. Director, Chief Lane, you have the task that we talked about a year ago to enforce paid sick leave. Another thing that all council members have probably gotten inquiries about, right? I mean, I open my, my mail and I have people saying like, I'm a, I'm a restaurant server. Is I'm, I'm at home for COVID. Does my employer have to pay me? Could you talk about what your office is doing? How are you enforcing? Are you able to enforce and kind of just bring us up to date on that?
No problem, absolutely. Absolutely. So one of um, as as everyone uh the council knows and also for the public, the way that our uh basically was written, it was that it went into effect, as every people may know, right before kind of things shut down, the first shutdown for COVID. And within that process, uh there was supposed to be a year of actually making sure that uh businesses and individuals could start to work together to see how the actual process uh began to work. Now, obviously, uh with with COVID and with all the things that are happening, uh that became much more important. And also we started to see actually some things happen on a, on a federal level. And within, within the CARES Act that also gave front-loaded people to have access to um paid sick leave, because our paid sick leave model as far as actually investigating and making sure who's doing it or not doing it kicks in within twenty twenty-one. Um you also see that last week that um, that the mayor's office introduced the ability to also do some front-loading, much in the way that the federal government was able to, was able to do it so that we'll be able to help people, especially while we're in this crisis right now. And we also were able to hire uh someone that works within our Office of Business Diversity on paid sick leave, who is along with our legal or law office, fielding um complaints and fielding things that are going on and being able to reply to folks who have issues. So if you have people who are calling you, please send them um to me and we'll make sure that they get a response from folks and also getting people together to be able to talk about, once the law takes place, what does it look like? How do, how can people get responses and how will we go through it from an administrative law judge perspective? To be able to judge and rule on people if they were not getting their time. To be able to judge and rule on people if they were not getting their time according to the law of our city.
Thank you. That's good to hear. And I also want to kind of acknowledge that the office has been working with, your office has been working with the Gender Equity Commission on trying to figure out how to move forward on the deliverables. I won't say policies. The policy is a good place to start, but then you have to implement them. And you guys are the administration, so it's your job to implement them and not just have the ideas. So we talked about childcare, which was in the kind of 11 points document that the Gender Equity Commission put out this year that I'll draw the public's attention to. It was over the summer on the PittsburghPA.gov. If you search building an equitable new normal and gender equity commission. There were some 11 points, many of which we've covered in other budget hearings around policing, et cetera. And quality early childhood education, making investments, supporting local women owned businesses. When we talk about local business, which we have a lot today already, those are disproportionately female headed businesses as opposed to big business, right? Where we also are trying to foster leadership development, boards and commissions and in corporate sector as well, but we don't want to forget that our small business sector is, is where we see a lot of women building wealth. And then the last thing that I, again, council and the public have not heard an update on is piloting a universal basic income program, which the Gender Equity Commission advocated for in this public statement that I referred to. And then shortly afterward, there was an announcement from the mayor's office that Pittsburgh was going to be participating in what was, I think he called a general income program and which is very exciting. But we haven't heard any updates. Do you, is that work happening in your offices and can you tell us?
Absolutely. So as a part of the Office of Equity at the, you know, we have the report of the new normal kind of document from the Gender Equity Commission. We've partnering with the Economic Security Group and mayors from across the country. It's MGI. It's called Mayors for Guaranteed Income. Guaranteed Income is making a slight distinction from universal basic income because that would call to make sure everyone got a certain number versus what we know is that through this time and also through the report that was released last year that women of color and black women in particular have been most impacted by the things that impact and plague our city. So the idea along those lines is to a guaranteed income pilot. Then there will not be any, you know, city money and taxpayer money invested in it, but to partner with the Economic Security Group, Mayors for Guaranteed Income and local partners to be able to do a pilot that would actually focus on African American women. Knowing that that takes them as, you also know, as part of the work that happens that it takes African American women 23 months to earn what a white man earns in 12 months. And so we know that they, black women have been most impacted, not only through this, the traditional segregation and the traditional disparities in our city, but specifically those have been exacerbated, as you spoke on during this time. So it's a guaranteed income program called ACE P G H. And right now we're just in the model of being able to continue to find, develop partnerships to be able to facilitate the program because again, you can't use any taxpayer revenue to, to do it. But we do have partnerships with our financial empowerment centers. We've been having a number of conversations with philanthropy and corporate folks because, and it's been a lot of interest on really talking about. If you make these levels of investments, can you see the pilot of what happens and what people are paying for? How they were stabilize their lives? And then as the mayor talked about, it even plays into what does our tax policy look like? And how if we're able to be more supportive of people from a tax policy perspective, can they stabilize themselves? And in versus being very specific on how we give resources. Right now through our health and human services system, we're very specific on how we give resources to people. We say you can buy this in this amount of time with this amount of money. But this idea is to say, if you partner with, if, if you give people access to this guaranteed income, what decisions do they make? And then what should city, state and federal government start thinking about with populations that traditionally even through our health and human services delivery have not gotten the access to opportunity that they need?
I think you see, I mean, as a member of the Gender Equity Commission, I supported the idea. So I don't, you know, I support the idea. And advocated for it to be included in the recommendations that were made over the summer. But the time, again, I'll just say a gentle urging here, the time is people are in crisis now. Right? And so we don't want to study this to death or wait for partners for years, like we've had to for some other programs, right? And so can you give us a sense of when we might see this money move? And I, I will say also that we, we do cash assistance. We figure out those sorts of funds, right? So I think Director Powell, you spoke about the amount of direct assistance that we've been able to give people during COVID. And maybe you could identify what those.
Yeah.
Revenue sources were, because I think the CARES Acts maybe funds were unrestricted, but no? All right. So you could just help us with that.
Yeah, I can clarify that for you. So the funds that I was talking about, and I think to your point of making sure that this particular work isn't delayed is it was private dollars. So for the Oakland Society Foundation work that we were doing with GASSA San Jose and other immigrant migrant refugee organizations in the city, the funding came from a private, private foundation that has been working the cities across the country to provide varied amounts of funding for this type of work. And so back to Chief Lane's initial point is, you know, on the city side, we're ready to go. We're in the process of hiring a manager. It's the, the, you know, difficult task of fundraising, you know, the $3 million plus that's needed to make sure that, you know, you're not stopping the pilot midway because you have to fundraise for the rest of it. And so there's not a, you know, there's definitely an urgency from the team wanting to get this off the ground and making sure that people's needs are met and that we're able to prove that programs like these, giving folks agency to, to kind of take care of their own needs, that these programs work.
So the city can administer it, is standing ready? And our private philanthropy sector needs to step up to the plate and provide $3 million?
Uh, in, in so many.
I can say that, you know, you can't fire me. No, they can't fire me. So I can say that pointedly.
I think the idea is to make sure that we have a partnership, like the idea is that, you know, we want to, again, make sure that we're rolling out something that's fully baked. The worst thing that you could do to a person is start them off on a program with, where they're getting $500 a month guaranteed. And then whoops, we've got no more funding and this person who might have been relying on being in this pilot for a year, two years, no longer has that. And so, you know, it'll be a partnership as we've seen in Stockton, where this idea was first really rolled out for a mid sized major city. They've got private foundation money as well as corporate money and we're hoping to replicate that same type of partnership here in Pittsburgh.
For 12 months, you said?
The pilot is for two years.
Two years.
Okay. So I'm just literally using my calculator on my phone to divide 3 million by 24 months by $500. So you're looking about 250 households?
Yes.
Like that. Great, great. That sounds very exciting. I'll just say, let's just hammer that point as among council members that we are looking, we have, the administration has everything in place. We could start a guaranteed income program now when it's needed, if we have local dollars that committed for $3 million to cover 250 households over 24 months. That's what I'm understanding. And I'll, I'll leave it at that. And I really appreciate your work. It's really important that we support people through this time. This is how the city's going to come together. And at one point, just to bring these two things together, I just said I would stop. But I've said it in other hearings, you may have noticed, but the public may have not. In one of my neighborhoods, Bloomfield, the neighborhood organization raised just a few thousand dollars and awarded $500 cash payments. And all of the applicants and recipients were unemployed from neighborhoods. And their, their city residents unemployed from city businesses. And that's why they need cash assistance. So I really think there's a kind of triple bottom line here where we're providing, you know, the support that our neighbors need, but we're really reinvesting in ourselves and keeping these dollars so that our small businesses can get through this as well. And that's why we had to fight really hard, I think collectively in our public policy and at the neighborhood levels to support our small businesses so that they continue to be there to provide local wealth and local jobs as we get through the other side. That's what I'm saying on the ground. So I'll just stop there. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Kocil.
Thank you. Welcome, Director Powell. Majestic, my man, looking good. How's everything?
Well, how are you, Councilman?
Good, good, good. So it sounds like you guys really have a, you know, a firm grasp on, you know, recognizing the disparities, you know, as far as, say, for instance, from a black woman to a white man, as far as the, the pay disparities and things of that nature. And I'm all about data, you know, data is great to have, statistics are great to have. I'm more interested though in, you know, taking action as far as, you know, once we do recognize where the biggest disparities are. And when I say taking action, Majestic, I think you and I talked about this before. I would like to do in my district sort of a job fair of some sort, you know, whereas young inner city kids like myself, who really, you know, didn't have the means for a great education, but, you know, a job fair where we get to building trades, plumbers, electricians, roofing contractors, you name it, and teaching kids, you know, how to use a hammer or, you know, to, to make a living. Because you can make a good living at it. You were on with the mayor and I was talking about the lack of, you know, contractors here. We can't, we can't get somebody to come into the city and work for $50,000 because the work's too good out there and I could speak for the roofing business. I turn more work down than I take. So, you know, the abundance is there. It's just a matter of teaching kids and giving them that opportunity, I think. And that opportunity for me, I feel like a job fair would be a great opportunity in order to, yep.
So what we can do, Councilman, is, as you know, I represent the mayor on the Partner for Work Board. And there's been a lot of great relationships developed with Executive Director Earl Buford in the Builders Guild and contractors and really coming together to be open to engaging communities that traditionally haven't been engaged in ways that you haven't, we haven't seen in Pittsburgh thus far. But what we can do is have a conversation about some targeted engagement in, you know, your South Hills District. I mean, it's open to anyone, obviously, any council person, but some targeted engagement of the resources and opportunities that are there, that sometimes there's a, just sometimes there's just a break between people's ability to know that there's a training program or it might be a particular local, but they might be good at something else, right? Some kids good at HVAC, but the steam fitters are doing something on Banksville, right? So we can do a little more targeted engagement because also what we know is that even during this time, that companies need more and more people and we're getting people trained and people are getting access to opportunities, but it's sometimes a distinction in the communication and making sure that what the Builders Guild and what Partner for Work is presenting is also touching every community. So I'll be willing to make sure that we kind of engage it in a broader way with communities that may not have as many training programs localized in the areas, which is also just a challenge that often there's groups that have training programs and they're not always and they're not spread equally throughout the city. So.
No, no, thanks for that, Majestic. And, and no, I, I plan to do sort of a job fair in my own district and, you know, but I didn't know. Is that something I'd partner with you?
Yeah, I would love, I'd love to partner with you on it and, and we can, you know, bring whatever resources we have to bear as well as the partnerships that have kind of already been developed to enhance it so that, you know, folks in the district are getting, you know, the, the most opportunities.
You know, Majestic, I've already got the professionals. I went there and, you know, the different types of professions I want people to talk about. Maybe we could sit down or, you know, Zoom sometime over the next month. And I'd love to, you know, providing the times change and we're able to get, say, a bunch of kids in the gym or wherever we decide to hold it, you know, so, so no, okay, that's good. I, I, you know, I look forward to that. For me, there's nothing more valuable than, you know, teaching somebody something and having professionals there that are going to say, yeah, we will, we'll give you an internship. For instance, the steam fitters or boiler makers, having them, you know, commit to an internship for one of these children that, well, young. Attend the, the job fair. So, okay, I look forward to talking to you with that. Thanks for what you all do and.
Absolutely.
Yep. Take care.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any other members? Seeing no other members, I will just add that I'd like to work with you too on some of the things with the the employment programs in our district, but I really want you to work with Christie Porter, who has the, you know, the project in our district and she's actually doing the most amazing work over there. And I, if you haven't had a tour there, I hope the two of you will take a tour. And I'd be happy to arrange that for you to go over and just meet with her and see. The mayor's been doing a lot. The uras have been helping. And I, I just want to see us continue to do things to help build up that program because it's amazing for our district. And the building trades, most of the unions are in my district. There's no reason there shouldn't be some collaboration in there. Well, they will know, right, Councilman? We fight over it all the time. I say that's my district. Yeah, but he's a man, so the men call him all the time. So that's why I laid down the gauntlet. I'm like, no, they're in my district. But anyway, I just want to thank you both for, and all your office staff for, for everything that they're doing. They're doing a lot in, in all of our areas and, and I know that you put a lot of time in. So I just want to thank you for everything.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And now we're going to start with the Controller's Office and we have about 40 minutes before we start our next meeting. So if we could have Director Urbannick read something for the controller. Good morning, Controller.
Good morning. Sure.
Morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, the, the city controller serves as the fiscal watchdog for the citizens of the city of Pittsburgh. It's the job of the controller to protect city tax dollars from waste, fraud and abuse, as well as to suggest improvements to city services and compliance. The controller does this by auditing all city government related expenditures. The city also has the Finance Department and Treasurer who collect and audit all city revenues. The controller also conducts audits of all city departments and city authorities, such as the Urban Redevelopment Authority, Pittsburgh Parking Authority, Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority and Pittsburgh Housing Authority. Through audits of city departments and authorities, the controller makes recommendations on how to make those departments more effective, efficient, and how to better spend city tax dollars. Controller is also responsible for producing the city's annual comprehensive annual financial report. The Controller's Office has several different divisions, accounting, accounts payable, performance audit, fiscal audits and engineering. In the budget this year, the total budget for the Controller's Office is $4,501,000. That's a decrease from what was anticipated in the five year plan of $449,000 or 9.1%. Total full time positions are 57, the same as last year. Unlike the other departments, the office has not eliminated positions in this budget and did not reduce their non-salary budget and does not contain an anticipated July 1st workforce reduction line item. Instead, the controller, the vacancy allowance in the Controller's Office was increased from $71,000 to $355,000, giving that same kind of effect as the July 1st, but allowing the managerial choices to be made through the Controller's leadership. This increase to the vacancy allowance is equivalent to the elimination of four and a half positions. And with that, it's my numbers. I'll give it back to President Smith.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Director. And Controller Lam, do you have something that you'd like to start with?
Yeah, if I could. Thank you very much. And then I appreciate the opportunity to see everyone today. You know, we, just like everyone else in the city, on March 16th, we went to a remote work model in our office. This was actually something we had been planning to do as a pilot to see how working from home would work for some of our employees. And I am, I'm glad to say that so far, you know, given the circumstances, it's actually worked pretty well. You know, our auditors have been very productive working from home, you know, being in several departments, including the police, where we looked at secondary employment, IMP, parks, as well as the Parks Conservancy. where we looked at secondary employment, um, IMP, uh, parks, as well as the Park Conservancy, uh, the, um, Public Works, looking at street maintenance, uh, and a number of other audits that we did, both fiscal and performance this year, and for the most part, working from home. We also, uh, were able to complete and release the comprehensive annual financial report, uh, on time, which I consider May first. We were able to do that in the end of April, uh, so that's another year where we've met that, uh, that objective of getting that report out in a timely fashion. And again, for the most part, working from home. Right now, our auditors are working from home, uh, every day. Our accounting staff comes in once a week, uh, just to pick up work, to take it home and work on from home. Uh, our inspectors are for the most part out in the field, uh, so they're, and they're out doing their work. And our invoicing and accounts payable folks, uh, we've gone to skeleton crew there where we have people come in and process invoices, uh, in, in a much smaller and socially distant fashion, so as to keep everyone safe and to continue to do the city's business. Um, so it's been a, it's been an interesting year, obviously. Um, looking forward to twenty twenty-one. Let me just talk a little bit about why we did what we did with respect to budget. Um, and, and it, it echoes a little bit of what I heard Councilwoman Gross say earlier, which was, you know, we have never really fully recovered the positions we lost during Act Forty-Seven. And council's been very good about helping to restore a lot of those positions over the last few years. So, uh, prior to Act Forty-Seven, we were at seventy-two positions. We dropped all the way down to about forty-eight positions at one point. Um, and we've slowly built that back to right now where we have the equivalent of about fifty-seven positions. Um, because we've added some auditors, some auditor positions. Now, what we did, starting in March, obviously, is we went immediately into a freeze, a hiring freeze. We haven't hired any positions this year. That's created a number of vacancies in our office. And what I've agreed to with the Pudido administration is that I would, I agreed not to fill those jobs until we get a better understanding of any potential federal funding, uh, moving forward. I didn't want to eliminate the jobs because as you know, we spent so much time and effort re, uh, you know, re-upping those jobs in this office that we didn't want to have to go through that again. And so, uh, we're, we're, we're meeting the same financial demand. And, and I would arguably say we're actually doing better, uh, than, than a lot of the other departments when it comes to the savings that we'll generate. Particularly when you consider what we're generating this year, along with what we'll consider, what we'll generate next year. Um, so I feel very strong, good about where we stand, uh, and our ability to generate the savings that, uh, will be required. And hopefully, uh, we'll have a better resolution, as the mayor said today, uh, with some federal assistance as we move forward. There are just a couple of things I did want to mention, um, a- as we move forward. Because I, I, I listened to the mayor's presentation today and I, and I agree with so much of what he said. But I do just want to send a cautionary note about a couple of things. Um, first off, um, the, the issue over reviewing taxation, which I think is a healthy discussion. Something that we need to do on a regular basis, as the mayor suggested, uh, understanding that we are a changed city. You know, we are today less than half of, uh, the population that we were at our peak. And yet we continue to have, uh, pretty much the same number of jobs, if not more jobs, in the city of Pittsburgh than we did at the height of our manufacturing strength. Uh, and so while we continue to be a center for employment, we are no longer a center for, uh, for residents. And, and that creates a, a, an overburden on the people who live here. Uh, and so he's right, that we need to take a look and look at a new model. What I caution about is this, um, just in knowing the way that Harrisburg works and, and the discussions that go on in Harrisburg, that any discussion about redefining the wage tax or, or any of our taxes, um, the, the likely, uh, successful path there will be one that is revenue neutral. Uh, and so that if we are to change the wage tax, the likelihood is that that would require, uh, potentially a cut to the wage tax, as the mayor suggested today, uh, or, or, or a, uh, exemptions at the lower end, as the mayor also suggested today. Both good ideas and both things we should talk about, but I don't want council to get its hopes up that that's going to generate new revenue. Um, to me, the only thing that will help generate new revenue for this city is a new relationship with our largest employers. Uh, you know, we have now seven years of, of no significant contribution from our large nonprofits. And I don't think you can look at that as anything but an opportunity lost. Uh, you know, that's a significant funding source that we were relying on up until seven years ago. And for the last seven years ago, we haven't. Uh, and so clearly that's got to be the discussion. And whether it's codified under some new taxation model, or whether it's negotiated in some payment in lieu of taxes, um, that's gotta be part of the answer for the city of Pittsburgh, uh, as, as we move forward. The other thing I've just touched briefly on, um, is the discussion that we've had with respect to, um, police and policing and the idea of, of systemic racism. And, and, and my concern here is one that's really beyond the city of Pittsburgh. Because I look at this problem from the position of Greater Pittsburgh and, and, and our, and our entire region. And what I can tell you is that based on our fractionalized system of local government here in southwestern Pennsylvania, we are systemically incapable of dealing with this issue, uh, without significant change. And so I was glad to hear the discussion earlier about how, about delivery of services, particularly emergency services and public safety services beyond borders, beyond city borders. And, you know, we've, we've had this discussion for a long time in this town. Um, we lost a great champion on this discussion recently with the passing of Dr. David Miller, uh, who passed, uh, a couple of weeks ago, um, who was really the person behind Connect and the Center for Metropolitan Studies at Pitt, uh, who was a real advocate for this provision of services across, uh, across municipal boundaries. Um, and it's really the kind of discussion we need to have right now, particularly, uh, in terms of, of police and public safety. Um, because these small communities, there, there's, there's no way they're going to be able to do the kind of things that Pittsburgh's able to do. Um, and I'm not saying this is criticism of what Pittsburgh's doing. I'm actually thinking Pittsburgh's doing some very good things. Um, but, but, but this problem goes beyond our borders and we've got to be willing to have a very significant conversation about what policing means, um, in all of Greater Pittsburgh. And, uh, and we have some communities out there that just aren't going to be able to handle new mandates, given the fact that they're not, they're not able to handle the mandates that they have right now. Uh, and so, so we've got to have a very, uh, serious conversation about that. Um, but with that, I, I do want to tell you that, um, our, we are looking forward to, uh, you know, continuing the work that we're doing in the Controller's Office, continuing to generate savings, um, budgetarily for the city. Um, and, uh, and I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions or, uh, take any conversation that you have. Again, I appreciate the chance to talk to you today.
Thank you. We're glad you're here with us today. Um, members?
Madam President, I'll start if.
Okay, good. Councilman Koke, please.
Welcome, Controller Lamb. You got all dressed up for us this morning. Unless that's digitally. Probably digitally, uh, you know, pajamas, but, uh, so, so now, hey, Michael, I just want to thank you for always being responsive for any time my office reaches out to you, whether it be about the Park Conservancy or you name it. Um, your office has been great. Um, I hated to see you lose Doug. I thought he was fantastic. So you've not filled his position then, I guess.
I have not filled his position, but that is the one position that I will fill. And I plan to fill that before the end of the year.
Yes, and I'm glad you went on to mention about how you were below the numbers still, as, uh, Councilwoman Gross pointed out, a lot of many departments are. Because in reading the review here, it's like, oh boy, Controller Lamb just decided to make no cuts, you know? So, so that's, that's really good to know. And, uh, obviously, you know, we'll see what the federal government does, providing, uh, any cuts that may have to come. But, um, hey, and I was really glad to hear you mention about the nonprofits, you know? I've been bringing that up and you and I have had some conversations about that. Um, and you know, when this time, when we're looking at revenues and, you know, revenues that probably aren't going to be coming in for the next year. You know, it's the obvious for me. I just think, well, where have they been in this? And then I see, you know, UPMC with a seventeen billion dollar, you know, um, windfall from last year. And these businesses are not hurting. These businesses are flourishing. So, you know, who has that conversation? When that conversation comes? Um, let me start it. I don't care who joins in, but that certainly, and if we don't get federal relief, that, there's no question about it. They need to put in, um, any thoughts on that other than what you already said?
The, the, the only thing I would say about that is, you know, when you, when we, when you look at the original, uh, legislative proposal that changed our taxation the last time, which, you know, created the, created the payroll preparation tax and, uh, and the, and the local services tax, and that whole tax package. The original proposal on the payroll preparation tax was that it would apply to all employers, not just for-profit employers. Um, you know, the, the, the nonprofit organizations were pretty successful in lobbying that part of the, uh, that, that part out of the bill. And it never should have been. I mean, I, I get that they're tax exempt, um, but they do pay payroll taxes. Um, and, and the payroll prep tax is a payroll tax. And, and that's a tax that they should be paying. And I think there's a, a very strong legal argument, uh, behind that. And I think had, had that been in the original bill, it would have survived a court challenge. Um, but that's the kind of thing that we need to be talking about. I know that, um, Senator Fontana had actually introduced that kind of language as for, for a discussion and consideration. Uh, it hasn't gone anywhere yet, um, but that's what it's going to take. It's going to take an effort. Um, I was, I was glad to hear the mayor talking about not just reaching, you know, reaching here in the city, but beyond the city and communities all across Pennsylvania, uh, to, to create a package that, that every city, uh, could help. Now, not every city is the same. Not every city has the, uh, the, the amount of nonprofit property or, uh, employment that we have in Pittsburgh. Um, but for Pittsburgh, that's got to be part of the answer and part of the solution.
No, I couldn't agree more with you. And you'll hear, say, for instance, UPMC, I, I know that they, they did kind of come to bat under the Ravenstow administration with the, um, Pittsburgh Promise. That's long been since over though, correct? Uh, they longer contribute anything toward that, um, their obligation. And that's been over for a few years now at least, right?
That's right. And listen, we're not here saying they're the bad guys. I mean, the, the fact is, our large nonprofits do, do amazing service here in the city of Pittsburgh, whether it's our hospitals or our universities. I mean, uh, they do. And in some cases, they actually do contribute. They contribute on a tax basis, uh, particularly at the University of Pittsburgh. There's a lot of things that they do that help our bottom line. Um, but there still has to be some discussion about what the ongoing commitment is and how we are able to plan for that, uh, financially moving forward. And, and that's, that's unfortunately a discussion that just hasn't finalized here in Pittsburgh. And that's, again, that's an opportunity lost.
No, and I agree with you. Um, you know, I'm a, I support, I love, you know, UPMC, they do some great things. I voted for the new Optic Center down, uh, you know, in, um, uptown. And, you know, I know what that brings to the region. I know the people it comes brings to the region actually too, just to come in and, whether it's getting a procedure or, or working here. So I support them. But it is frustrating, you know, when we, you know, vote to, uh, for a development that's, you know, millions and millions and millions of dollars and, and this time of need. In the past, Michael, has it been just the mayor saying, hey, here's what we, we would like in lieu of taxes, um, you know, just so we can keep afloat? We need some income there. Uh, has it just been the mayor saying, here's, here's what we want? Is there some sort of guide they went by, uh, you know?
I think, I, you know, I, I've not been part of the negotiations, uh, either in this administration or in the prior. Um, but I will tell you that, uh, there was, there was discussion, um, that, you know, looking at what other cities were doing. I mean, you take a look at what's going on in Boston, you know, given all the hospitals and universities in Boston, the, the significant contributions they make, which was far beyond what, uh, what we have asked for or received, uh, here in, in Pittsburgh. I know that, uh, the early discussions in this, in this administration were around the whole one Pittsburgh discussion. Um, but it just seems that that has stalled. And, and so there has to be some reconsideration of just a, 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 a straight out, uh, payment in lieu of tax arrangement that will allow us to better financially plan what we're doing with or without COVID. I mean, COVID just makes this a little more, um, important right now. But, uh, but, but we need this, even, even if COVID weren't, uh, hadn't come along, we would still need to have this discussion and finalize a deal. And that deal, um, you know, again, it's, it's, it's a negotiation, just like anything else, but it needs to take place. And if it doesn't take place, then it's, I think it's time to have a real conversation in Harrisburg about taxation of their payroll.
Right, right. I agree. The dire situation just puts that spotlight on, on this for me right now. Because it's the obvious, we're not going to get amusement or parking taxes back in the near future. Um, if we don't get that relief, we need to turn to somewhere. And that's where we need to turn to, as far as I'm concerned. Now, when they do give us, if we come to say to an agreement with them and they say, okay, we're going to give you five million dollars a year for the next ten years, we get the option, we can put that money in the capital operating general fund. Is that right?
That was the prior agreement. Again, I think all of this is up for discussion and negotiation. Um, but, uh, you know, there are, there are ways we could structure a deal that makes it more agreeable to their mission. You know, if we wanted, if UPMC and, uh, and AGH are Highmark, if they want to, uh, arrange a deal that their contribution is going to go to fund, uh, EMS, uh, that, that wouldn't be a problem. I mean, we'd be, you know, we could probably get from them enough to cover the EMS shortage after reimbursement, which is somewhere in the neighborhood of three or four million dollars, um, in an annual basis. I mean, that's, that's the kind of thing that falls right within their mission and the kind of thing that, that's the way I think we would approach that kind of negotiation.
That all makes sense to me, Michael. And it sounds like the path I think we need to go down. Um, one last thing is, I hear about, you know, the four big UPMC, uh, you know, CMU, Pitt and, you know, uh, Highmark. Where does the Catholic Church come in on this? Are, are they close to the big four? Or are they, you know, not that significant as far as, you know, monies that we, they do not pay in taxes for property?
Well, I mean, I think that the mayor suggested today that the, that the, the, the four, the four that you just mentioned, uh, are responsible about eighty, would be eighty percent, whether you looked at it from the property they own or from their employment. And I would guess that's prob, I think that's probably accurate. I think it's, it is around there. And, and that remaining twenty percent, you know, we've got a lot of small nonprofits in this town, uh, and then we have the Catholic Church, uh, as well. Um, and so, I mean, the Catholic Church probably is a bigger number when it comes to property they own as compared to employment. Uh, but, um, you know, there, there really aren't any more Catholic grade schools in the city. Uh, while there are a couple, but they're, you know, they're, they're not certainly what it used to be. And that was really their employment center. Uh, and so, you know, we still, we still have Catholic high school, uh, in the city, a couple. Uh, so, so, you know, they, they, their, their numbers would be down from that. Um, but if you remember when we created the first, uh, big nonprofit, uh, contribution plan, they were part of it and they did contribute.
Okay, that's it for me. Thank you, uh, Michael for being here. And, uh, back to you, Madam President.
Thank you. Do we have any other members?
Madam, Madam President, sorry, I was clicking away on my, I'm sorry, I was clicking away on my screen and I couldn't get to you.
Uh, Councilwoman Gross.
Appreciate it. Good to see you, Controller. Thank you for being here today. Um, and I apologize for being off screen for a little bit. We're in the middle of a very long day. And I'm supposed to be chairing the hearing that's coming up in twenty minutes. Um, I want to give you an opportunity to speak to our, well, I'm not gonna, I'm sure I'm gonna use the right accounting words, our consolidated debt. I was reading the CAFR a little bit over the weekend. So if you could just, it's not something that we, um, talk about, but it's especially when we're talking about revenue shortfalls. Um, and given our moment, now we're out of Act Forty-Seven. It's just a, a kind of a long-running conversation that's important to us, the city residents, is kind of how we balance. We have our pension obligations, but then we also have our capital obligations, the money we've borrowed from Wall Street. Um, for a very long time, the city government kept its borrowing, didn't borrow for some fifteen years. And we've been borrowing substantially more. But that isn't the only body of government. I just want to kind of remind the public that this, this table doesn't vote on school board, capital investments, does not directly vote on PWSA capital investments. I did vote on significant bond purchases or bond issuances, excuse me. As a PWSA board member, and now Councilwoman Strasburger is on that board. And there's a debt load there that I just want to kind of keep it, um, not, I, I want to spend some time talking about it in budget hearings because it really combines, you know, it takes part of our revenue on an annual basis. But also out of people's pocketbooks, they're paying for the school board debt, other school board taxes and PWSA debt out of their, the, their rates and the city, um, bond borrowing out of their city taxes. Um, and it, but it's all the same constituency. There aren't, you know, we're all bodies of government on top of the same residents. Um, and so I didn't want to let the budget hearings go without at least touching upon that. Um, so if you, if you have anything to say about that, it's always something on my mind, right? We don't want to overburden ourselves. But at the same time, we're trying to make up for about fifty years of deferred maintenance on everything and a collapse, right? We, we, this is the time when we are reading. And a collapse, right? This is the time when we are rebuilding the city, and we have to really figure out how those finances work together.
Yeah, so, you know, in this, when you think of the city itself, you know, we've gone from a position where we had a significant financial deficit, so to speak, that we have corrected in many ways. And we did that in large part by some fiscal, being fiscally responsible in a number of areas, spending and some increased revenues and revenue performance. But also, as you said, by not borrowing for a number of years. And so while we have righted the ship on paper financially, I would say what we have now is an infrastructure deficit, right? We have so much, there's so much to do. And it's going to require significant financial investment. We're in a position right now where we are able to better borrow responsibly, and we are doing that. We are also retiring debt as we take on new debt through the payments that we're making. The fact that we met the debt cliff a few years, a couple of years ago, and are now making much smaller payments in debt service than we were before has given a little bit of breathing room to address new capital projects, better fund the pension system, and some of the other financial obligations that we have. So from the city of Pittsburgh's perspective, we're not perfect, and we're not great, but we're in a much stronger position than we were before. But you're right, when you look at the entirety of the debt that our citizens have to bear, particularly our citizens who are water customers of the Water and Sewer Authority, but also those citizens who are not water customers of the Water and Sewer Authority, there's a significant amount of debt over there. My argument about the debt for the last 10 years or more, actually, 12 years now, has been the structure of the debt in addition to the amount of the debt. As you know, back in 2007, the PWSA entered into a very complicated and winding-up costly debt issuance, an interest rate swap deal that I can promise you, no one on the board of the PWSA ever understood what they were voting for.
Vote for anything you don't understand. There have been class action suits around those kinds of non-callable debts that I have been, you know, are moving forward in places like Philadelphia. And we did talk about, you know, entering into those class action suits, chose not to. I actually have a lot of faith in the new financial team. We already had their budget hearing. They have restructured a number of those deals, finally. It took 13 years to figure out how to disentangle some of it. But a lot of, I mean, I want to say more than half of that 2007 debt has been retired or restructured in a much more healthy way. Just straightforward bank borrowing basically allowed it to be restructured. So that was, that is something to keep our eye on, but is largely what's out. What I'm more concerned with is that it's straight up easy to understand, straight out, the same kind of bond issuances we do. But there's, we have a significant amount of work to be done. So I'm, you know, both, not just us, right? Not just a PWSA, but counties across the United States went bankrupt over those kind of credit default swaps. Cities went under, you know, underwater on credit default swaps. It's kind of old news. We want to keep our eye on it and continue to clean them up, but it's almost done. But what we do still have, I really like that you named the kind of infrastructure deficit, that there's just, there's work to be done. And it's not cheap work, and we need to spread it out. And we're going to need prioritize and make choices. But we also need to keep our eye on that total debt load across all of the governments, right? Because we're about to start in on the Alkasan projects. And that's just, you know, the EPA rejected their first plan because it was just plain too expensive for the people of Allegheny County to ever pay for. There just was not enough money in the households of Allegheny County to pay for it. So we have to keep our eye on that, those projects, and make sure that we're rebuilding the neighborhoods that we're always talking about rebuilding, and make sure that our city residents are guiding the infrastructure projects they need and not the infrastructure projects that somebody else wants. So that's there. I just made a big speech about it, but I was giving you the opportunity to talk about it.
Well, the only other thing I would say is that as we move forward, and you're right, that we have righted a big chunk of that debt around that swap deal, that does mean that the Water and Sewer Authority has become much more financially stable. And the problem there is that now we've become a target for the sharks, right? There are real sharks in those waters. And the privatization crowd won't go away. And they will come to us with deals that sound way too good for us to pass up. And I will continue to tell you that that is never a good deal for your ratepayers or for our taxpayers. And I will continue to fight that fight, because every time that we enter into one of those deals, we get the short end of the stick. And those companies, they know this business as well as anybody. And they always know a way to make a deal better for themselves at the expense of your ratepayers and your taxpayers.
They have a lot more attorneys and bigger attorneys than we have. And we discovered that with Folia, when we tried to sue them, we fired them and sued them. And we were massively outgunned.
Exactly. And so, I mean, as we move forward, we just have to keep an eye on that. I mean, just remember this, where they, where their ability to make money is on the water, in the sale of the water, and the expansion of their customer base through that water. Where they don't make money is on your storm source. So there's nobody suggesting that they're going to buy your storm source, right? So what's going to happen is we're going to lose the revenue generating asset and be stuck with the non-generating asset that we're still going to have to maintain and now maintain under a consent decree that is going to be very expensive, not just for our community, but for all the communities around Pittsburgh.
And I can say openly, I also found out firsthand that they also didn't invest even in water. They didn't invest in water quality nor in the organization. They decimated both and to, really to the harm of city residents. So we're talking about privatization of operations, right? We owned the asset the entire time. It's not just about the ownership of the asset. At all times, did we own the asset? We owned the pipes. We owned the water plant, but we had given, we had privatized operations. And so that's something that we had watched, we have to watch out for in the future.
It was look at the success that we've had with respect to the parking asset. You know, we didn't enter into a, if we would enter it into a long-term lease, we still would have technically owned the asset, but we wouldn't have controlled it. We basically would have lost all evidence of ownership. And so, and a private company would now be dictating to us how much we'd have to pay them every time we want to have a street fair or every time we want to build on an existing surface lot. You know, that's one of the things we keep continuing to miss about that whole deal was the freedom that it gave us with respect to neighborhood development and for, and community purposes. But that aside, just the financial arrangement, the fact that we are now in a position that we actually have a plan to get to a much more fully funded pension system because of that deal has fundamentally changed finances of Pittsburgh. And so it's been, it has continued to be a good deal. There aren't too many council members left who were part of that discussion. But, you know, the ones who are know how much that meant to us back in 2010.
Yes, that's all. I'll be grateful to the council members who voted against privatization of operations for the parking assets. I agree. And to our staff, Bill Rannick, and the people at the Budget Office who were here then as well, who supported them. Is there all the questions I could think of right now, Madam President, since we are coming up on 1/20? Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you. Any other members? Councilman Kalkil? You have to turn your mic.
You're muted.
I used to do that to Darlene Harris. Now you have to do it to yourself.
I just wanted to add to what the Controller just said, you know, in talking to, whether it be Aqua or competitors coming in to try to acquire PWSA. PWSA is not my district's water supplier. However, we do have major, you know, sewer issues over here and flooding issues. And he's right. Not one of them, you know, I would say to them, just flat out, you know, what about, you know, who's, what about the sewers? And they'll, we're not, we're not interested in that. So I just wanted to back up what he said there, you know, just in talking and, you know, negotiating with wannabe buyers of PWSA. None of them were interested in taking over the sewer system, I will say.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? Seeing that we have, it's 1/24, and we have another hearing starting at 1:30. I'm just going to just ask, what's next for you, Controller? What do you think you'll be auditing in this coming year?
Yeah, so, you know, as I mentioned earlier, we did a, we did a police audit, just looking at secondary employment. But in 2021, we want to do an all-in police audit. As you know, it is really a topic of conversation, police operations, manpower, you know, many of the issues that you talked about earlier in this meeting today. We want to take a look and recommend some best practices and see where we're doing well and where we're not. You know, and hopefully, we will make some recommendations about police operations moving forward that council will find helpful.
Thank you. And if you don't recommend a substation in the mound, you might have to move, just saying. A lot of people are asking about it up there.
They could move into my first floor. Maybe you move into my house and we'll...
And then I just briefly would like to say that I hope that you'll consider looking into the Stop the Violence Fund, Housing Opportunity Fund, Land Bank, things I'm on, some of those things I'm on, but some of those things that are new and taking a lot of money. So I'd like for the coming year, if you, you know, keep it open mind.
That's a great, that's a great point, because the Land Bank and the Housing Opportunity Funds were something that we wanted to take a look at once we had a little bit of history. And I think now would be a good time. Yeah, next year will be a good time for us to do that. So we definitely will do that.
Thank you. And I just want to say thank you for helping all of us when we were asking for so many audits with the Parks Conservancy. Your office really handled it so well. And we just want to thank you very much for all your work and all your work, all the time. It's always nice hearing your voice, always a voice of reason, and so brilliant. You have a lot of institutional knowledge and just love hearing it. So thank you for sharing that with us this morning. And thank you. And then I'll just say, I'm happy to say that the Controller, Bill Rannick, the Budget Director, and Kevin Paulus all live in District 2. So everybody in District 2 is handling the money. So you might want to be nice to their councilwoman, just saying. And vote for us for our budget, our budget request. That's my little plug for District 2. Again, I have a motion to recess this meeting. And I do want to thank, before we do, the clerk and her team, the City Channel staff, our Sergeant-at-Arms, and all the budget folks and the Controller's Office for everything they do to get us through this process and to work on this, on our budget. Can we have a motion to recess?
Question recess.
Second. Own favor?
Aye.
Meeting recessed.